Will the chambers please come to order? Evening, I'd like to welcome you to the April 28, 2015 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Council members, Devine?
Here.
Here.
Garpetian?
Here.
Sinanian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here. Councilmember Sinanian, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Please join in the salute in the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, a free republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand for the invocation. President Lyndon Johnson once said that, quote, "Doing the right thing is not the problem; knowing what the right thing to do, that's the challenge." As our newly organized council gathers for their first meeting this evening, we pray for them and ask that they be guided by wisdom and courage to know what is right and do what is necessary to see that right acted upon. We pray for their families and give thanks for their service to our wonderful city. We continue to pray this evening for the people of Nepal who were devastated in the recent earthquake. We pray for the families who are mourning their loved ones lost or those still searching for signs of life. Must also keep the city of Baltimore in our thoughts and its people in our minds and prayers as they endure the civil unrest and riots that have ravaged that city over the last few days. We pray for peace and harmony for Baltimore as we pray for peace throughout the world this evening and always. Amen.
May we have your report, please?
The agenda for the April 28, 2015 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Friday, April 24, 2015, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And the next item?
Under Presentation and Appointment, 3A is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of Tuesday, May 5, 2015.
Mr. Choa?
I'll take it on. Mayor Najarian, Members of the City Council, for the May 5 agenda for the joint meeting, we have a Glendale City Council and Glendale Financing Authority meeting, and that commences at 9:00 a.m., and this is Director of Finance Budget Study Session Number One. That afternoon on May 5, we have no business agenda items under the Glendale Housing Authority. For the City Council to commence at 6:00 p.m., we have a number of items under consent. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Amendment to Extend Service Authorization with ICE Online Trading Platform. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is regarding an agreement among Boulder Canyon Participants and SCAPA for the Boulder Canyon Project Closeout Joint Audit. City Clerk, Legal Advertising Contract for the City of Glendale. Director of Community Development, Additional Funding for the California Code Check, which is a vendor that does work for us. Director of Public Works and Community Services and Parks, Glendale Narrows River Walk Phase Two and Byque Culvert Project. Director of Public Works, Equipment Lift Replacement. Director of Public Works, this is a B-line facility, it's a resolution for design-build. Director of Public Works, Civic Auditorium Exterior Improvements, we're advertising for bids. Director of Public Works, Testing Maintenance and Monitoring of Fire Life Safety Systems at various city of Glendale Buildings. And lastly, for the Director of Public Works, under consent, Proposition 84, Green Streets Demonstration Project. That evening, we also have two items under adoption of ordinances. First is ordinance adopting aggregate net energy metering, and second was continued from a number of dates, and this is regarding internal audit, and that has to be on a date certain because we're waiting for legislation on that item. Under Action Items, 8A, City Attorney, filling a vacancy for the City of Glendale on the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority. City Attorney, Charitable Solicitations. Director of Public Works, Scenario for Glendale's Allocation of Potential New Sales Tax Revenue. And lastly, under Action, Director of Public Works, Connected Cities Coalition, 710 Public Outreach Funds. And that, Mr. Mayor, concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
3B is a proclamation designating the week of April 12 through 19, 2015, as National Public Service Telecommunications Week.
Okay. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Members of the City Council, Mr. Choa, Ms. Beers. Glad to be here. My name is Don Wise, Executive Administrator, Verdugo Fire Communications Center, serving 13 fire departments out of the Verdugo Fire Communications Center in Glendale. We're happy to be here today because you're recognizing our 911 heroes. These are the folks that answer the phone, and they do it with just a voice. You never get to see them except for at moments like this or when there's bad press, and we do our best to avoid bad press at all costs. Our folks here have one other thing that they do aside from their voices, they use their intellect and their common sense to get through their jobs every day, and they do that with calm, cool demeanor, and they do that with amazing, amazing performance. I can tell you that Verdugo Fire staff off to my side here, they took in 130,000 emergency phone calls this last year. Fifty-six thousand of those were 911 calls, and they were answered within 10 seconds 98% of the time. They were answered within 15 seconds 100% of the time. That's phenomenal work when you think about the amount of work coming through the communications center. I know for the Glendale Police Department, they handle quite a bit more calls than we do. They handled 239,000 phone calls, 64,000 of those, 65,000 of those were 911 calls. They too were answered within 10 seconds 98% of the time. So phenomenal, phenomenal work by these folks. And I'd like to introduce some of my staff. We have Shift Supervisor Jessel Lagard, Fire Communications Operator Crystal Bartle, and we have newly promoted Shift Supervisor Melissa Leary. And then I'm going to turn it over to Cheryl Davis-Moore from Glendale PD.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, again for recognizing this important week. Our dispatchers don't get enough recognition. They do a thankless job day in and day out, and I appreciate the hard work that they do. I'd like to introduce some of my staff as well. Police Communications Operator Jason Cox, Sally Chong, and Ron Villagracia. So again, thank you guys for your hard work. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And I do have a proclamation for you. Let me read it into the record. Whereas across the nation in times of intense personal crisis and community-wide disasters, the first access point for those seeking all types of emergency assistance and homeland security information is the 911 center. And whereas the Glendale Police and Verdugo Fire Communications Centers that receive these calls have emerged as the first and single point of contact for persons seeking immediate emergency assistance and are expected to multitask under emergency conditions with compassion, accuracy, and professionalism throughout the year. And whereas this week, celebrated annually, honors the thousands of men and women who respond to emergency calls, dispatch emergency professionals and equipment, and render lifesaving assistance to the citizens, residents, and visitors to the city of Glendale, now therefore I proclaim April 12 through the 18, 2015, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. What's the date today? Is this a typo? Or is this last week?
Today's the 28.
Okay. Well, we'll check on that. We did have a changeover in staff and all the excitement about the new council, so please excuse us if this date is off. Or was I? And I congratulate the dedicated and hard-working members of the Glendale Police and Verdugo Fire Dispatch Communications Centers for their ongoing outstanding service rendered to the community.
Screwed that up.
Mr. Garpetian, your first official act. Date was wrong. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, we have another item?
Yes. Last-minute item that we added for presentations is the Can Tree Event. And I believe we have some representatives from this worthy cause.
The Realtors. Come forth. Not just the Realtors. We've got a wide range of community members.
Hard-working Realtors.
My group here.
We've got the Salvation Army.
They have.
Mayor and Councilmen and Councilwomen, we're here on behalf of the Glendale Association of Realtors. I'm the President Silva Hamline, and I want to introduce you, our co-chair of our Can Tree this year, and Hilda will do the presentation.
Very good. So before she starts with the presentation, congratulations are in place. Unappropriate. Mr. Mayor, congratulations for your reappointment, I don't know for how manyth time for the mayorship, so well deserved and Godspeed. Mrs. Devine, congratulations on your reelection. And of course, Mr. Garpetian, congratulations on your election. With that, we'll start with Hilda.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Hilda Lafurla. We are here tonight on behalf of our 1,700-member Glendale Association of Realtors. Standing with me is Silva Hamline, the President of the Association, Greg Asturian, the President-Elect, Rick Barnes, the immediate past President, which he's not here at the moment, and Lisa Jensen, who co-chaired, and she's not here unfortunately, the Can Tree charitable event with me. Every year, our association organizes several charity events, proceeds of which help different causes that our Realtors and partners in the community are passionate about. Can Tree charitable event is perhaps the largest and is held in the month of November. Last November's event was at the Brand View Ballroom and was attended by close to 400 Realtors and community members. Dinner was served, live and silent auctions were held, and I am happy to report that we were able to raise over $40,000 net of all costs for the following four local charities: Glendale Education Foundation, Glendale Police Foundation, STAR Program, serving deserving children with mentoring programs, Essentia, formerly Pathachief, making a difference in the lives of homeless, and Glendale Chapter of Salvation Army. Before presenting the checks, I'd like to recognize our donors with whom Can Tree 2014 became the success that it was. Mr. Clerk? Our slideshow? Okay. Our brand sponsors were Arno Agamalian, Salpi Avakian, Armin Avedian, Norin Singler-Burnier, Arda Bezjian, Victor Bagdasarian, Sean Davis, Rick Dinger, Vivian G., Silva Hamline, Claudette Kachaturian, Elegant Banquet Hall Catering, North Hills Escrow, George Kachaturian, Helen Krikorian, Isabel Manukian, Edward Magardichian, Jason Park, and Diana Walker. Our silver sponsors were Allied Lending Group, Lawyers Title, Apes Lock &amp; Key, Delbeck Estate, Team Eric, Adora &amp; Company, Union Bank, and Robert Johanna. Our gold sponsors were Tom Quack, Glenox Escrow, Property ID, Inter Valley Escrow, The Art in Real Estate, Skyline Home Loans, Kiwanis, Craig, State &amp; Fine Properties, and Keller Williams. Our platinum sponsors were Anush Catering and Tax and Business Consulting Group. And last but not least, our event sponsor was Greg Asturian. We thank them from the bottom of our hearts. At this time, I would like to ask Silva Hamline to present the check for Salvation Army Glendale Chapter to Lieutenant Joshua Snit. Next, Greg Asturian will present the check for Essentia to Natalie Kumora. And Rick Barnes is not here, so I will present the check to Susan Hunt for Glendale Education And the STAR Program check has been delivered previously. Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, that concludes our presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your good work.
Before you leave, I want to thank all the Realtors. It's good to see fellow Realtors here, our President, our President-Elect, and Hilda, everybody. Thank you for the good work, and this year was especially a more successful year. The event was great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Asturian, quick question. Did you watch the CDBG meeting?
Yes, I did.
So can I, I mean, maybe...
This was serendipitous. We did not know that you had the CDBG, and I know you were struggling with some funds and stuff. This was not deliberate, and it just so happened that we had some money that we had fundraised for charities, and just so happened that it's the day that we thought it'll be a good time to dole it out, so to say.
Not to ask a tactless question, but how much was the check for the STAR Program?
Well, the STAR Program was approximately $4,000. And now that you're asking that, it would be unfair for me to say, not say the rest of them. For the STAR, it was $4,000. For the Glendale Educational, the Glendale Educational Foundation was approximately $4,000, and for Essentia, it was approximately $4,000. Of course, Can Tree would not have started if it was not because of Salvation Army, and that check was the largest check, which was for about $28,000.
Very good. And did I hear correctly, there are 1,700 Realtors are members of Glendale?
Glendale Association of Realtors, yes.
But they're not all Glendale residents, right?
No. I would say if, the number of resident Realtors, not agents, there is a difference between the, you know, the two. I believe it's somewhere close to about 700.
Still, very impressive number. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, next item?
Next item on the agenda is Consent Items, including minutes, following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed.
Ms. Devine?
Yes, I'd like to pull consent items for, let's see, G and N, because I'm really proud of what our Glendale Water and Power is doing, so I'd like for Mr. Zern to just explain to the public those two items, because I think we should be proud of those.
G and N? Is there any request for any other item to be...
Are you going to pull D?
Oh, yes. Let's pull D.
D.
So we've pulled four...
D.
D, G, and N. Is there a motion for the balance of the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes. Let's go to 4G.
Before D?
Let's do 4G first.
Certainly. 4G is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding Recycled Water Exchange. G1 is a motion authorizing to enter into an agreement with the City of Burbank and City of Glendale.
Okay. And Ms. Devine, did you want to have a specific highlight on that, or...
No, I just want, would like Mr. Zern to explain to the residents of our city what this agenda item is all about, so that they know that we are proactive in our water and power conservation and issues.
Excellent. Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, this is actually formalizing something that's been in place on a gentleman's agreement for quite some time, and it's an interconnection agreement with the City of Burbank involving reclaimed water. So in 2010, we made the actual physical interconnection between the two cities. And what this does, it allows us and them to have backup water in the event that either of our recycled plants goes down. They have a separate waste treatment facility in Burbank that manufactures, produces its own recycled water, and we're part owners of the LAG plant, Los Angeles Glendale Water Reclamation Plant, with the City of Los Angeles, and we have, that's where we get our water from. So this is a backup. We've got a number of customers, you'll see a little more detail when I do my report later, who have a number of customers who rely on that for irrigation, Forest Lawn, Caltrans, some of our golf courses, some of the City of Glendale, on our medians. So if for any reason the plant goes down and that water can't be produced, then we're without irrigation, so this allows us a backup. It also gives us an opportunity, each city, to be able to take some of their system down for regular maintenance and not have to worry about, you know, serving their recycled customers. So it's just another step towards expanding our recycled system, building some redundancy in it'll help us and our customers.
Excellent. I'll move that item.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes. Let's do 4N.
4N is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Public Benefit Charge Program. And 1 is a motion approving the program for fiscal year 2014 through fiscal year 2015-16 and authorizing to retain professional services of O-Power, Inc. through a contract with the Southern California Public Power Authority in amount up to $50,000.
And I brought this one to the forefront because I happened during the last campaign to visit a home which is using this system, and they loved it. They were really happy about it. So I'd just like to let everyone know what happens and how this can occur.
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, O-Power is a very powerful software system that we use as part of our modernization effort, and it's the driver for a number of things that benefit our customers. This particular one is called the Behavioral Demand Management Program. We used it last summer on a pilot basis with about 40,000 homes, just under 40,000 homes. And what it does is, when you have a prediction of extreme weather, heat, when we get the biggest draw on our electrical system, when the air conditioners are running, the system will send out either a telephone call or an email or both to residents, reminding them of the situation, asking them to conserve, giving them ideas on what they can do to try to keep the demand down and their bill down consequently, subsequently, as part of this. We had, I'm sure that over the course of last year, we, I know I took a couple complaints, you probably took a couple complaints about people calling saying, "It's going to be hot tomorrow, turn off your air conditioner." That's not exactly the way it goes. But follow-up surveys on those 39,000 people, one done by O-Power themselves, another survey, our regular customer service survey, both showed a very high level of satisfaction with that particular aspect of our program. So we were very happy with that, and I think the pilot was very successful, and so we want to expand that. It's already part of our Public Benefit Charge Program and Budget that you previously approved, but this is now an amendment to the contract to extend it out and do it citywide each summer or during our hottest peak periods.
Thank you. I'll move that item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Let's have a roll, please.
Councilmembers, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes. Let's do 4D now.
4D is Fire Chief, Regarding Disposition of a 2002 Ford Ambulance. D1 is Resolution Authorizing Donation to the Ministry of Health in the Republic of Armenia.
Hi, Chief. Tell us what's happening.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, it's a pleasure to offer up the Ministry of Health in Armenia, an opportunity to hopefully save more lives with the piece of equipment that we've used to save lives here in Glendale for the last 13 years. It's a 2002 ambulance. It's seen its life cycle within Glendale, but we don't feel that it's seen its life cycle on the planet. And so this is two in a series of two, and we're looking forward to hearing the feedback that we're going to get from, hopefully, is it the sister city, Gapon? Is that where it's going?
Yes.
Dr. Najarian's going to be making sure that happens, and we're just excited about the fact that we can see more, more lives touched by our rescue equipment, so.
Thank you, Chief. We do appreciate that. The City of Glendale has been very generous with its surplus equipment through the years to many of our different sister cities, not just the fire department, but police department as well for some of their, I think it was motorcycles we had donated to Rosarita Beach, our sister city in Mexico. The first ambulance which we donated, which you offered us to be donated, is on its way to Armenia, and with this one being approved, we hope to get it on the road, on the freighter in the next week. And I can assure you that Councilmember Sinanian and myself, who are planning a trip to Armenia this year, will be sure to track it down and make sure that it's being put to good use, and I can assure you that it's a type of equipment that for them is an extreme luxury to be able to transport their sick and injured in what we consider a standard piece of equipment. To them, it's really quite a luxury, and we're hoping that it will save lives and improve their quality of life throughout. So Glendale, the City of Glendale, and especially our fire department, will get great kudos as we go to speak to local elected officials there and the health ministry, and the doctors and nurses and EMTs that will be attending and using that equipment. So I thank you, Chief, and everyone in your department, very much.
Thank you.
Is there a motion for 4D?
I'll move that item.
Second.
Okay. A roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes. Thank you. Let's move to the next item.
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
Comments?
Sure.
Friedman?
Well, I want to congratulate Mayor Najarian and Councilmember Sinanian on the Armenian genocide event at the Alex Theater on Sunday night, and I'm congratulating them because they were on the committee. You chaired the committee, I believe.
We co-chaired.
Co-chaired the committee that organized the event. I've been going to these events since I've been on council several years, six years now, I guess, and of course, it was the 100th anniversary of the genocide last week, and this event on Sunday was certainly a fitting tribute. It was by far the best night that I've seen this event. It was just amazing and powerful and moving, every single moment of it. And it was sold out for weeks, which is clearly a success, and I don't think anybody that was there was disappointed with what they saw. So congratulations to you and to the entire committee and to everybody who worked on making the event a success on Sunday.
Thank you.
I'll just join Councilwoman Friedman and congratulate the committee, who did lion's share of the work, and especially Dan Bell from our own staff, for doing a lot of the heavy lifting to make sure that that event was a successful one. And our Alex Theater, again, is amazing. So glad that we, you know, we spent some money to bring it up to date and get a very viable venue for not just that event, but all the events that it provides a forum for. And thankfully, Alex is now booked pretty regularly.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to echo my colleagues' comments. Also, I'd like to thank the public who attended the event, and in respect of one and a half million victims after Armenian genocide.
Thank you. And on behalf of myself and all my colleagues, I'd like to thank all the residents of Glendale who participated in the historic march in Los Angeles from Little Armenia to the Turkish consulate. There were estimated to be over 130,000 marchers. They all marched peacefully, arm in arm, with one message, seeking justice for the genocide which was committed 100 years ago. The City of Glendale was very well represented on the special dais. Mr. Garpetian, our city clerk, Mr. Kasakian, Mayor, you were prominently featured. I was there, and I believe there were probably some others from the city that escaped me. But it was a day, the streets of Glendale were pretty empty. I don't know if anyone was driving Friday, but it was, I mean, the streets were wide open, and that was, I think, just a reflection on the huge numbers of adults, seniors, and children who made their way to Little Armenia at that time. Interesting thing was how everyone got back from the Turkish consulate, and... The interesting thing was how everyone got back from the Turkish consulate, and it was unusual to see so many folks using the metro system, which I'm very happy about. It was, it served its purpose, and it exposed a lot of our residents to some of the features and convenience of the metro. So this was really a win-win. And of course, that culminated a week of events throughout, throughout the city and throughout Southern California. And if anyone attended, I'm sure you saw one or two of our council members, maybe all five of us, on some of them, along with our city clerk, at some of the different events. And it was very well, was very well done by all the groups. I'm very proud that the City of Glendale participated in such a meaningful manner. Ms. Devine?
I just wanted to mention that there were very many, there were a lot of events commemorating this genocide centennial, and every one of them was impactful, was educational, and was important, especially to, not only to the Armenian culture, but also to non-Armenians. And I was at the Alex Theater, and I met up with two young women, Hispanic women, and I know their father, and they were there for the commemoration. And I thought that that was very significant, that it was not just the Armenian population that were remembering this occasion and commemorating this genocide, but it was everyone in this community. There was a great crossover, and I think that is very significant and very important. And I also want to compliment the Armenian Medical Society, who did a special event on, and they had tents which represented the different genocides that have occurred in our lifetimes. And it was very, very moving, Darfur and Cambodia, and of course, the Holocaust and this genocide. And so I feel that the, this centennial has brought out in everybody, in everyone in our community, the feeling of justice and reparation that we need to see, and I hope that that occurs in the near future. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Just to continue on the theme that Councilmember Devine brought, another fantastic event, the weekend, the Sunday before last week, was held by Jewish World Watch in Los Angeles at the Pan American Park, which was a march to end all genocides, organized by the Jewish World Watch. And although it was, maybe the impetus of it was the 70th anniversary of the Holocaust, but the Armenian genocide was very prominently featured at that event, and the speech, actually, the keynote speaker focused on the centennial of the Armenian genocide. And as I spoke, as my speech during the Alex event, Alex Theater event, accentuated, there is an undeniable connection between the Armenian genocide, the Jewish Holocaust, and every other genocide which has unfortunately followed since then, and some of them are in our lifetimes, I mean, in our lifetimes, in our adult lifetimes, one of them arguably going on right now. So that's why it's so important for all of us to remember, to commemorate, and to act, not just sit back and pretend that while it's happening far away, so therefore it doesn't impact us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? Staff, any comments? Okay. Let's move on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor and Council, next item is community event announcements. This portion is reserved for three-minute announcements about events taking place in our community.
Okay, thank you. I have a card submitted by the Special Olympics Host Town Committee.
Hi. Hi, everybody. My name is Wendy Mathis. I am the Director of the Host Town for the Special Olympics World Games. Probably most of you know by now that in less than 100 days, the World Games for the Special Olympics are going to be coming to Los Angeles. It is the largest humanitarian event that will be taking place in the year 2015. Just to give you an idea of what that means, this will be the largest event that's going to be in Los Angeles since the '84 Games of the Olympics. There will be 7,000 athletes, there will be 3,000 coaches, and there will be, coming from 177 countries around the world. Most of you may or may not know this, but the Special Olympics were started by Eunice Kennedy Shriver. She had a sister who had intellectual disabilities, and she felt that she was being mistreated. So in her backyard, she started what is now the Special Olympics. It serves 200 million people worldwide every year. One of the unique events of the World Games is something called Host Town. There will be over 80 host towns in the state of California hosting these delegations from around the world at the end of July. It is a great honor that Glendale is going to be one of our host towns. To talk a little bit more about that, it's going to be Dan Bell from the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, first, thank you for the kind words earlier, but I must also thank you for your leadership in agreeing to be a host town. This has really been a wonderful experience for me as the organizer of our committee here in Glendale, and our committee members, you might know some of them, Matt Zakarian from our police department, Wendy Jacoby, you just met Wendy Mathis, and Denise, who will speak here briefly in a moment. But yes, July 21st through the 23rd, we will be hosting 100 athletes from three delegations. We're proud to announce the delegation from Armenia, from Dominican Republic, as you'll know, both consulates are here in Glendale, so we, along with those consulates, are proud to host those athletes, and then also the country of BONAIR, B-O-N-A-I-R-E, down by Jamaica. So we are proud to host them. We are working hard to make sure they see our wonderful city for what it is, and we want to thank our committee members, we want to thank you. You'll see you have pins and lapel pins there, provided by World Games, and we want to thank them. Next up, I want to bring up Denise Miller, who represents our title sponsor, Glendale Adventist, who came in, as you'll remember, as a $15,000 sponsor, so we want to thank them and give Denise a moment to speak here.
Thanks, Dan, and good evening to the council and council members and city staff. I just want to, on behalf of Glendale Adventist, our CEO, Kevin Roberts, our entire executive team, our over 700 physicians and our 2,400 employees, tell you that it would be an understatement to say that we are less than thrilled to be the title sponsor. We are actually over the moon. It's right along with our mission. It's great when our mission and the city's mission and this whole experience really lines up, and this one does, with our Play to Learn Center in Eagle Rock. We're thrilled, we have a lot of things coming out of our particular hospital, and also things with the host committee, so thank you again for having us.
Thank you. Did you get another tattoo, Denise?
Don't tell my mother. It's temporary.
It's the, it's the Special Olympics logo, in case anyone's interested.
And I will just close to say, if anyone in the community watching tonight is interested in helping sponsor from some of the fees that we do take on to be a host city, they can call me, 818-548-4844, and we would be happy to talk to them, or if they want to volunteer at the games. So thank you again to the council for their vision and leadership in being a host town.
Mr. Sinanian, then Ms. Devine.
So thank you. Thank you for organizing this, thank you for having us host, you know, be a host city. I want to stress again, I know I've said this a couple times to Dan, but SCIU Local 721 Armenian Caucus, public employees want to be a part of this, they want to somehow help. I mean, it's like an open offer, they've called me twice over the last two months saying, "How can we help? How can we be a part of it?" So I'm just handing that off to you. Thank you.
Ms. Devine?
I, of course, I'm very happy that we're a host city, but have you, do you have lodging for all of these athletes and coaches yet, or how is that working out? Can you tell me, us?
Yes, of course. Yes, one of our duties as a host town is to provide lodging, transportation, training facilities. I should say thank you to Glendale Unified School District for providing some of their facilities for the training for these athletes. We will be putting them up at the Hilton here in Glendale, so we're proud to do that here, of course, locally, but that's where they will be staying, and we'll be transporting them throughout town.
Very good.
And we will be coming back to you with more events in the brief three minutes.
Quick question, that already cuts me off. You said the event is on July 21st through 23rd?
Yes, sir. Our athletes arrive on Tuesday, the 21st of July, and they will be with us, excuse me, until the 24th, when they are picked up by the World Games coordinators in Los Angeles down at USC and UCLA, where the games on the 25th, the opening ceremonies will occur at the Coliseum.
So we won't have any games in Glendale?
There are no games. We're simply a host town, which is wonderful. We get to showcase our city as we know it, as a wonderful city, so we're happy to have them here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Shont Sahakian and Dottie Sharkey.
I don't see Dottie.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor, City Council, and staff, first, to all of you, I'll say it in one full swoop, congratulations to all of you on your new positions, newly elected and re-elected as well, and Mr. Mayor. Our Glendale, I'm the, my name is Shont Sahakian, I'm the President of the Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation. We support three programs in Glendale, one, the Trails in Open Space Program, two, the Glendale Outdoors Program, which takes youth to Duke Magin Park to teach them about nature and science education, and three, we just had a meeting today, and we're proud to partner with the city and Glendale Memorial on a new after-school youth sports program for the four South Glendale elementary schools. So we were able to do this through fundraising events that we have and the community supports, so we want to announce two of them today. The Fifth Annual Verdugo Mountains 10K is this Sunday. We're going to have over 700 runners at Brand Park. It is the largest event of its kind in Southern California, and if you are interested in registering, you could still register at runtheverdugos.com, and that event is sponsored by Glendale Memorial. And while we were marching with 130,000 of our closest friends in LA, I got a text message telling me that our Fourth Annual Glendale Dodger Night in two weeks, on Friday, May 15th, was sold out. We had to go back to Dodgers, this is the first time we've, you know, it's a great blessing to have, went back to Dodgers, and we have more tickets available, but they are limited. So we encourage everyone to go to glandeldodgernight.com as soon as possible to order your tickets. We're going to have almost 1,000 Glendale residents sitting all together at Dodger Stadium, and that's Friday, May 15th. We're working on, and we are being constantly, what's the right word, campaigned, so that we have a first pitch delivered by our city manager, Mr. Scott Ochoa. So we're working, we're working really hard, and he's helping us as well, and we appreciate all the support from the city manager's office and Dan Bell, of course. And of course, if residents would like to help us get there, please go to glandeldodgernight.com, and you'll see a okay pitch from our city manager at Dodger Stadium. A good pitch, a good pitch. It will reach, it will reach the plate.
It would obviously be deferred to the mayor, of course.
Of course.
I don't know what to say.
So thank you all for the support, and, you know, we're looking forward to seeing you all at both events, the 10K this Sunday, and Dodger Night on Friday, May 15th. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Shont. Next speaker is Nancy Sumner with the Veterans Coalition. Colonel Nancy Sumner.
It's okay, Ara. I had to say that. Congratulations, Mayor, City Council, for being here. I feel like this is my family, and Glendale is my family. So I'm really honored to be here on Memorial Day. Last year, I was the honored speaker, and this year, we have Major General McCarthy is going to be speaking, but we want to recognize, we want to acknowledge the veterans in the City of Glendale, World War II especially, because this is the 70th year anniversary for World War II. So if anybody knows any World War II veterans, we'd like you to sort of reach out to the Patriotism Committee or to the Veterans Coalition. We want to acknowledge them and recognize them at the event. I know there's a lot of events going around the city and around the community. Go to an event, it doesn't matter which event you go to, acknowledge and remember Memorial Day, it's a really important day, and a sad day on that. But the Veterans Coalition and the Patriotism is enlightening Glendale. We don't know all the veterans that are in Glendale. We don't, veterans don't like to self-identify. So what we would love to do is, with our new coalition that we have, we have a website that is up and running, and Shont, is it officially up or did he run away? He split the scene. There are a few people in this room that are on the Patriotism Committee and on the Veterans Coalition, could you raise your hands? Vanessa, that would be you and Joe, too. They're also going to speak next, and you've been to the, actually, Mayor, when you came, it was wonderful that you came, Mayor Sinanian, it was, I don't know if you want to share anything about it, but you saw within the group what we have, it's the coalition from Burbank, Pasadena, La Crisena, the foothills, and it's really about getting back to our community and getting to know what resources we have, and every day, there's more and more resources. So I don't want to take any more time, but I believe who's going to follow me is really important. In our own backyard, we have a lot of resources, and I was in the military for 31 years, and I didn't realize how many resources Glendale has, and I'm honored to be living in Glendale, a part of Glendale, and fighting for the veterans and acknowledging them, and please, if you're a veteran and you're watching this and you're a family, self-identify, come, get to know your resources, we are all here to be a family, not to always offer help, but just to give out a loving hand.
Thank you.
I'm going to take you up on it, Colonel Sumner. I mean, there's so many wonderful things about the coalition and the work that they do, and the projects that they work on, and the issues that they bring forth that would otherwise not come forth. And the one thing that really shocked me at the last meeting was the statistical information about the rate of suicides in the veterans, amongst the veterans. It's staggering, it's, I mean, it's really bad. And currently, at least, medicine is able to somewhat deal with these PTSD issues and all these issues that arise from having served in war zones, but still, it's a very serious issue, and unless, unless we're all aware of it, and we all chip in and support all programs that deal with these issues, these numbers are not going to improve. Do you remember what the number was? I don't want to say anything wrong, but it's staggering. Okay. Yeah, it's really shocking, so thank you, thank you for all that you do.
Vicky Kurial? That's the next.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Charlie.
And I'm Dani.
And we're the Curly Fries, we're a pop duo group, we're currently on a school tour, and we do not believe in violence, drugs, or sexuality. We have an event, this, that's happening in Glendale, it's May 15th and 16th, and we'd love to formally invite you guys to come. This is our manager, she's going to speak.
I'm also there at home. The reason why we decided, and I was, I'm just teaching them how it's done, and how you can do this without having the music industry, or even Hollywood supporting us. These young ladies have been offered record deals and have been offered other opportunities. I believe that we can do this on our own with the support of the school system and the community. I selected the City of Glendale, I like it, it's a beautiful city, it's really clean, and I wanted to do the event outside of Hollywood, and wanted to make it more like a community event, and invite, and so I thought, you know, the first people I need to start with is the city. I went to the chamber, and Andrea, who's been there for five years, said, "Go to the city, invite them, too." And then I spoke with Eve, whom I believe you've been at the Beyond the Stars Palace, it's right on 417 North Brand Street, so she says, "He'll come, he knows exactly where it is." So if you guys can, in any way, support us, this is the first time we're doing this, we are actually from the City of Florida, and I own businesses there, and I was a chamber member, so I know to involve the city on anything that we do. And it's a difficult journey, we're not funded by anyone, we don't have any investors, we choose not to sign at this time. The day we will sign, they will have to give us full control, and they don't want to do us, to do that now, I guess. And we're building the leverage by promoting our brand at the local schools, and we perform at Holy Family.
Holy Family.
They are coming to the event. The majority of the event is going to be children, which we've donated the majority of the tickets, and we've actually sold tickets at a lower price and donated part of the profits to schools. So it's a two-day event, but it's three shows. It, May 15th, Friday, is from 7:00 to 11:00.
One to five, and then seven to 11.
And then seven to 11. On, it's a circus with gortorshis and no animals, just, you know, magicians and jugglers and snow cone and cotton candy and popcorn, and we do expect a lot of industry people because it is their first showcase live, so all, majority of labels have made phone calls, and they want to see them, and we are inviting them to see what we are putting together, so that's it. And I hope that you all can come.
So you said, May 15th?
May 15th and 16th.
There's a Saturday.
May 15th, Saturday, is 7:00 to 11:00?
Yes, yes.
And where is it?
Stars.
Beyond the Stars Palace?
Palace.
We can actually leave these, we can leave the flyers with you, and...
Now, we just want to repeat it.
are inviting them to see what we are putting together. So that's it. And I hope that you all can come.
So you said, May 15th?
May 15th and 16th.
There's a Saturday.
May 15th, Saturday, is 7:00 to 11:00?
Yes.
And where is it?
Stars.
Beyond the Stars Palace.
Stars.
Palace.
We can actually leave these, we can leave the flyers with you and...
No, we just want to repeat it so that people at home can hear you.
May 15th and 16th.
May 15th and 16th, from, May 15th, Friday, from 7:00 to 11:00. Doors open at 5:00 for meet and greet. We also have several other artists performing there. One of them, Jordan Jones, who has millions of followers on social media. So she attracts a lot of young kids. We also have Brianna Lee, who has several millions of views on YouTube as well. She's a phenomenal singer as well. She's my girl, I like her. She's more of a soulful singer. She likes Etta James and that kind of music, and that's what she sings.
Well, that's great.
Probably my daughter would know her, but...
Thank you.
We wish you the best of luck. You can leave one of those flyers in the back, if you would, and we'll keep it in the room. And good luck. We hope you have a great series of shows.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Kudos to you for coming to council and advertising your event here. It's very...
Thank you.
Very brave, but very smart.
Thank you. Congratulations to be entrepreneurs. We start with you guys. When we go and open our business here, building stores and restaurants. All right. Thank you.
Vanessa Hughes? After Vanessa is Svetlana Davtian.
Go ahead.
So we'd just like to start showing...
Do you just want me to show it?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
know a little bit more about the statistics that you were speaking of. We currently are losing around 22 veterans a day to suicide. This is more than the number lost in the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan. And as our troops are coming home and things tend to die down overseas, that number is not dwindling. There is no correlation statistically speaking between combat and suicide. I'm a therapist with Wellness Works, and one of the things I hear all too often is a struggle with veterans coming out of military life and returning home, and not just leaving a combat zone, but really being able to come back home and find community. Not on My Watch is the first of what will be an annual event to bring veterans together and to bring the community around them. So the 22nd of June through the 27th of June, veterans will stand post on Colorado Bridge every hour on the hour, nonstop, from 8:00 in the morning on the 27th through the evening of the 27th. In addition to this, we are asking the community come and stand vigil along the bridge and just to witness what has been done. Every veteran in between guard will take a set of dog tags and place it on a battlefield cross to, I guess, represent, represent the veteran who statistically will have taken his or her life that hour. The end of the event, the 130 dog tags will be brought off the bridge, and we'll have a community-wide vigil. So we are asking the city council, we're asking the community, we're asking other communities in this area, Pasadena, Burbank, the surrounding areas, to really join together to let our nation's men and women know that they're not alone, they're not forgotten, and that they're seen.
And you want to mention, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you want to mention why the Colorado Bridge, why it's, what is it called and why it's being done on Colorado Bridge?
You know, in terms of symbolism, I think there's lots of reasons. First off, it's...
It's known as Suicide Bridge, right? I mean, that's...
Correct. Yes, so it is known, and that is, that is how we, I guess, selected that bridge. But as this event has grown, it really kind of, it holds a lot more. It holds the bridge and going from one life to another, bridging communities together, different kinds of people together. And I think it holds more symbolism than, I think, what was initially selected for. But, yes.
So it's June 27th?
June 22nd.
Second.
22.
Okay.
In symbolism for the 22 a day. Through June 27th, which is actually that week is PTSD Awareness Week.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Svetlana Davtian, followed by Roberta Medford and Matt Gange.
Good evening, councilmen and councilwomen. My name is Svetlana Davtian, and I'll be representing the Scholars Program at Glendale Community College. Our program is the only program that offers honors courses for our students, for them to be able to academically challenge themselves and prepares them for a higher education as they transfer to universities. And in addition, we have a variety of community service, fundraising, and social events. And, and our mission is to help our students build themselves as natural leaders and enhance their resumes further on. And some, some little facts about our program is that our advisor, Michael Harnett, and Councilor Roxanne Dominguez were recognized by Assemblyman Mike Gatto. And we also have collaborated with multiple programs to raise awareness. And some of those programs are, we've collaborated with Glendale Police Association for their annual COP for Kids toy drives. We also have collaborated with Relay for Life for their, as cancer walk, and we've raised over $2,000 for cancer patients. We've also collaborated with Habitat for Humanities and Walk for Kids, and we raised over $300 in that. And we want to open our events and activities to the community, because more collaboration can lead to more results. And so if you have students attending Glendale Community College, we ask you to encourage them to participate in our events. And some of our upcoming events are Meal of Love at Ronald McDonald House, and it's going to be on May 17th. And we also have an ongoing program that is Kairos. And Fridays, we usually go from 4:00 to 5:00 and serve food to the homeless. And we also have several social events coming up, like Movie Night on May 2nd at Glendale Community College, and we also have a beach trip on May 9th that is a holiday event. And so our goal is to make more, make more people participate and just raise the name of our program. And for more information, you can visit our website at gccscholars.wiible.com. And we also have a Facebook page that is gccscholars. Or you can email our president of the program, Agnesa Kazumian, at cccscholarspresident@gmail.com. So that'll be all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Roberta Medford, Matt Gange, followed by Nancy Michael.
Hello, I'm Roberta Medford.
And I'm Matt Gange.
And we're here representing Glendale Beautiful. I am the acting president, and...
I'm going to be coming on to the board in the next year.
Our upcoming May lunch is next Tuesday, May 5th, and it is in the Joe Bridges Clubhouse, as usual, in Glen Oaks Park, commencing at 11:30 with delicious homemade appetizers. I understand this is not the best timing for the city, but as my mother always used to say, "You have to eat."
And the program should be really interesting. Louis McAdams, who's the co-founder of Friends of LA River, is going to be speaking, along with Mark Sturtevant, who's with Community Services and Parks. And they're going to be speaking about Glendale's Riverwalk, both the Phase 1 that's completed and then the next Phase 2 and 3. And they're going to be talking about Los Angeles River's past, giving some of the history, as well as presenting a vision for the Los Angeles River in the future through its restoration. So, yeah, we hope you can be there on May 5th. Please RSVP to Sharon Wiseman. Her number is 818-248-4967. Or her email is sharon, S-H-A-R-O-N, at jetcafe.org. Thanks.
I'm really glad that Matt is joining the board. Good job, Roberta.
Lowered our age demographics by, what, 40?
You threw off the whole, the whole scale. We have a budget study session that day.
Yes, I understand.
So I just wanted to make sure that you understood that. If we're not there, which I don't think we will be, it's not a slight. We're, we're having a great time here, going over the budget.
Yes, of course. But do spread the word, and we encourage the community to, to join us. Louis McAdams is an incredibly cool dude, and he's also going to be doing a poem for our inspiration, so we're really looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Nancy Michael, followed by Elizabeth Manassarian.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Michael. I think most of you know me. We live in one of the safest cities in the United States. We're sixth or seventh, aren't we, Tom, of cities of our size?
Seventh, in the state of California.
Seventh, in the state of California. And that's pretty amazing, all things considered. And why are we that successful at being safe? We have a terrific police force. We have a fabulous police force, and a fabulous police force that has made a real effort to involve the community as partners. So I'd like to announce the 20th Annual Glendale Police Awards Luncheon, which is on May 17th, and I've brought everybody an invitation. Just in case you didn't get one in the mail and delivered, it's so much nicer. And I want to let you know that one of your esteemed colleagues, Paula Devine and her husband, are the present, are one of the presenting sponsors, and for that, we're very, very grateful. So the luncheon is from 11:30 to 1:30. There are a lot of people to be honored, a lot of community members to be honored, and I hope we see you all there. Thank you.
Did you say May 17th?
May 14th.
Okay.
At the Hilton. Did I say 17? Oh, May 14th.
And it's at the Hilton at what time?
The Hilton?
It's the Hilton Hotel, yes, where it's always been.
Okay, thank you very much. Elizabeth Manassarian, followed by Leon Mayer.
Mayor Najarian, council members, my name is Elizabeth Manassarian, and I'm the president of Rotary Club of Glendale Noon. And I wanted to first and foremost, on behalf of all the Rotarians, to congratulate our Mayor Najarian for his election, and Vartan Garbajan as being newly elected, and Ms. Paula Devine for reelection. I'm here today to make a great announcement regarding a community event called Jewel City Bike Ride, which will take place on June 7th. And with me here today are actually Armin Khalafyan, who is the president-elect of our Rotary Club, Savada Hamalian, who is also in the committee for marketing, and also Edwin Waskanian, who is going to be in charge of our hike. This year, we have a hike. And I also wanted to thank Mayor Najarian and Vartan Garbajan and Paula Devine for participating in the past, and invite all of you to participate. So I will hand the microphone to Armin to give you a little bit of detail about the ride. It's June 7th, so...
Mr. Mayor and council members, congratulate on all of your new seats. This year's event is June 7th, and our beneficiaries are going to be Glendale Police Department PAL Program, the ARC Family, and Glendale YMCA, Glendale YWCA. And this year, we have Glendale Police Department and the Fire Department participating in the, in the event. And both departments are going to have their own bike teams participating, so here's a challenge. We want to see all of you there with your bike gears. And I also wanted to thank you for your support. We just had a great, three weeks ago, we had a great Salvation Army food drive, and your support and the city's support made it very successful for us, so thanks for that.
Thank you, once again. We're here to promote an event that kind of builds coalition in the community, and I think the third year is yet to be the best year. I think, you know, we've, we've spent a lot of time trying to design an event that, you know, challenges people that are avid bike riders, but also encourages your more moderate bike riders, as well as families, to get out and enjoy the streets of Glendale. This is, in fact, the Jewel City Ride, and it's thus deemed to kind of highlight the city of Glendale and all it offers. This year's bike ride will include a, you know, a challenging 50-mile ride, which will begin at 7:00. And all of the information for the routes and which parts of Glendale we're going to be going through and maps are available at jewelcityride.com. We have start times at 7:00 for the Gear Grinder, which is the 50-miler, 9:00 AM for the Fun and Fitness component, which is a 25-miler, so those of us that aren't in shape can kind of, you know, take it easy that day. And then the Family Ride, which starts at 10:30, which will take us through parts of Verdugo Woodlands. But again, we encourage everybody to participate this year, and we're looking forward to increasing the numbers as the event continues to grow in the community. And more information is available at jewelcityride.com, as stated.
Question.
And I'm Edwin Waskanian. I'm in charge of the hike, and I realize I have limited time. Hike starts at Verdugo Park, moves up north Hermosita to Oakmont Country Club and back, 3.4 miles round trip. $10 donation if you'd like to participate, but that also gets you Round's Burgers for lunch, so it's a worthwhile cause, and we invite everyone to come out.
So you have a choice to walk or bike?
Yes. Yes.
So no excuse if you don't have a bike. Hiker, bike.
And it starts at 9:30.
I can bike.
Hiker, bike. Okay, great, great.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Devine?
I just want to mention the Fill This Bus, Your Food Drive that you did with Kiwanis, and it was fantastic. And what you do for the community is amazing, and this is always fun, whether you participate or not, whether you bike or hike, just go and have fun with, with everybody that's there. It's great. Wonderful. Thank you very much.
And as a Sunrise Rotary member, it's a special event because it's, it's done, it's organized by the Rotary Club.
And Sunrise Rotary as well, so thank you for...
Just saying, right?
Just saying.
Just saying.
Full disclosure. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, yeah.
Thank you. Leon Mayer, followed by Sharon Townsend.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the council and staff. It's been a while since I've been here, and I'm here on behalf of the librarian of friends at the library, and someone handed me something about One Book, One Glendale. It meets Jennifer Nixon, Niven, author of All the Bright Places, Thursday, May 7th. So I'm going to make the announcement, even though no one told me about that. Now, I am here this evening on behalf of the librarian of friends to invite you to meet Leon Bing, Bing, at the Central Library, May 13th, Wednesday, 7:00. Come early, parking is validated. Now... 7 o'clock. Come early, parking is validated. Now, talking about author of All the Bright Places, this former fashion model and noted journalist will discuss her books, including her autobiography, Swans and Pistols, and Do or Die, An Insider Account of the Crips and Bloods Gang. And I couldn't help thinking about All the Bright Places by the juvenile lady who's going to be at the One Book, One Glendale. Now, Leon Bing was born in San Francisco, where her mother was divorced five times. She had a Jewish grandfather, who was a strict disciplinarian. His name was Leon Lang. Leon Mayer, Leon Lang, Leon Bing. And he sent her to a Catholic convent school, and Leon survived her mother's five-time divorces. And Leon, with a beautiful body, became a highly successful model, which led to her having a successful Hollywood bid actress, TV shows Joey Bishop, Sweet Charity, and Basic Black, and all these TV programs at the time. That was in the '60s. During this period, she dated Warren Beatty and other studio executives, and not all of them are known. And she met a lot of screenwriters, one of which urged her to become a freelance journalist. And a neighbor, this goes, in 1955 urged her to go to the Boardwalk in Venice to interview some homeless teenager squatting, teenagers squatting in an empty building and write about it, and she did. And this article she wrote about got the attention of Los Angeles Weekly Magazine, this is back in the '60s, and they hired her as a reporter. This led her to more interviews, including gang members in South Central Los Angeles, which included interviews with Crips and Bloods. The book Do or Die is based on these interviews and was written and published in 1991. And she's still around. She won't admit how old she is. Somebody says she's in her 70s. But the book Do or Die is still on the shelves, and we're going to have her at the library, May 13th. Please come. It'll be a very interesting, enjoyable program. Parking is validated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sharon Townsend, followed by Edith Fuentes.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, and congratulations on your election, and to my fellow Sunrise Rotarian, Vartan, and to Glendale Healthy Kids Board Member, Paula, congratulations. I'm here tonight to say it's here. Tomorrow is the 16th Annual Taste of Downtown Glendale, begins at 5:30. It goes until 8:30 PM. Check-in, or the place that you can purchase tickets or pick up your wristbands, will be at Massage NV, where they will also have some adult beverages. We have 34 restaurants from brand at Lexington, all the way down to the Americana. I'm very excited, because this year, the Americana Marketing Department has partnered with us, and I'm pleased to say that we have seven restaurants at the Americana, including Bourbon Steak. So we're very excited. We hope you'll join us. It's a great way to taste a lot of the new restaurants in Glendale. We do have a lot of new restaurants this year. So please come and enjoy. If you don't have reservations, you can just pick up your ticket. We have pre-sold more than 650 tickets this year, so it's going to be a busy evening, and I'm very excited about that. Also, a second announcement, we have another event this week, and that's on Saturday, May the 2nd. Along with USC Verdugo Hills Hospital, we are collaborating and putting on a health festival, and you're welcome to attend. Anybody is able to attend that. We expect over 500 people in attendance. You'll have all kinds of medical screenings. Everything is free, including dental vision, glucose, and blood tests. Parking is available, all at Verdugo Hills Hospital for no charge, and again, there's no charge for the festival. So please join us and come eat with us tomorrow night. It'll be a great evening, and we have perfect weather. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Edith Fuentes, followed by Juan Gonzalez.
Honorable Mayor, council members, staff, good evening. I'm Edith Fuentes, immediate past president of Seroptimist International of the Verdugos. With me also is our past president, Stephanie, and Arlene Penyflor, who are also co-chairs of our Strikes and Spares. Before anything, I would like to congratulate our new mayor, and also congratulations to our new council members, Vartan and re-elected council member Paula. On behalf of our club president and board members, we are here to officially invite all of you and the community to join us on Sunday, June 28th, from 12 noon to 4 PM, for our 11th Annual Breast Cancer Strikes and Spares Bowling Event. We are early this year because we wanted to make sure you kind of have a little time to practice and bowl with us. Last year, we were joined by then-mayor Zahre Sinanyan, and council member Paula Devine, and also our city clerk, Ardi Kasakian. The mayor and council members and city clerk of Burbank were also there bowling with us. Everybody gave us the honor of opening the event and throwing the first balls. City manager is going to be doing the first pitch. You all can do the first throw of the bowling balls. Please join us if you can. We are early again, so that you can calendar June 28th at Pickwick Bowl. And let me turn this over to our committee chair, Stephanie Mines, who will give you a little bit more details on the event.
Good afternoon, Mayor Najarian, city council and staff. We are very excited about our 11th Annual Bowling Event. In your packet, if you will turn the pages, we have sponsorship levels. We are seeking all levels of sponsorships, from $250 all the way up to a platinum level, which is $1,000. The next page goes through our rules and regulations, the criteria. Each bowling team consists of six bowlers. We have children that come out and bowl. We have the Pickwick Bowl puts up the little, the gutter walls, the guards at the sides. And some of us, older folk, we like to use those also. But, so we have children and adults. And then the last page is the team organizing sheet that has a list of your team captain, as well as the participants. It's a great event. It was very invigorating last year, and we hope that City of Glendale, City Council is up for a challenge this year against City of Burbank. We'd love to set up a friendly challenge. We know what City of Glendale can bring to the table, and so we're putting the friendly challenge out to you tonight. And again, that's June 28th. We do have a Facebook page, which is Seroptimist Verdugos. And we also, for any further information, they can contact myself, which my cell number is 818-636-6009, or our gem Edith, which is 818-736-1911. So thank you so much.
I think I threw a gutter ball that day. So nobody wants me on their team, so.
Thank you again, and we hope to see you on June 28th at our bowling event, Strikes and Spares. We say strike out breast cancer and spare lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The last card I have is from Juan Gonzalez, our very own Juan.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Juan Gonzalez with the Community Development Department. And for the past six months, I've had the pleasure of working with representatives from Glendale Water and Power, one of which, Atene Haritunian, who's also here tonight, Community Services and Parks, Library, Arts and Culture, Police, Fire, and Integrated Waste Management, to plan a brand-new environmental street festival, Earth Day at the 134, which takes place this coming Saturday, May 2nd, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on the 200 block of Maryland Place. Brian, can you please run the promo?
The City of Glendale invites you to Earth Day at the 134 on Saturday, May 2nd, on the 200 block of Maryland Place, between Louis Street and Maryland Avenue. Join us as we learn new ways to have a greener lifestyle and care for our planet. Participate in workshops and activities for people of all ages while enjoying live entertainment, food trucks, and more. Plus, be sure to stop by and share your ideas for Glendale's Space 134 project. For more information, please call 818-937-8333, or visit us online at glendaleca.gov.
So as we planned the event, other city departments became involved as well. Human Resources helped register the community volunteer who helped recruit vendors, and we also involved Risk Management, the city attorney's office, et cetera, et cetera. The Public Information Office, GTV6, were instrumental in helping put together the promo you just saw. And our very own graphics department printed up the thousands of flyers that went home with last Thursday's Thursday folder, so all the kids in town would know about the event. But we didn't stop there. We reached out to nonprofits like Glendale Arts, who will be sponsoring the live entertainment. We worked with local businesses such as Pete Mont Office Realty Trust, who have generously provided free parking for the event in their parking garage. We've worked with local vendors such as Starbucks and Whole Foods Glendale, who will be present alongside city departments to teach residents how to lead a greener life and reduce their carbon footprint. We will also have lots of activities for the kids, including the park's climbing wall, solar etching, arts and crafts, and the always-popular bucket truck rides. The president of the Monterey Eco Community Garden will be coming out hosting a composting workshop, and GWP will be providing two water-wise landscaping classes as well in between the entertainment. We have a lot of fun for the whole family, for the whole family. And before I forget, this afternoon, I want to let all the ice cream lovers in town know that the Ben &amp; Jerry's Swirl Tour will be present to hand out free samples. They're bringing out their big truck and their electronic vehicle. It's a Tesla that has been equipped to house three giant freezers. So ice cream lovers, come out.
Tesla is equipped to host three giant freezers?
Yes.
Ice cream.
Yes. So we want to invite the entire council, the entire community, come out and join us. Go to the website, www.glandaleca.gov. Did I get it right, Tom? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Juan.
Thank you.
I don't have any more cards. We had a lot of cards today. Let's move on to the next item, please.
Next item on the agenda is the action items. 8A is the general manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding water conservation and drought update. 8A1 is a resolution implementing Phase 3 of the Water Conservation Ordinance. 8A2 is a resolution delaying the imposition of the applicable Phase 3 water conservation drought rate and maintaining the currently-effective Phase 2 drought rate during Phase 3 conservation for a period of six months. 3 is an ordinance for introduction.
Okay, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. We will commence with Steve Zern's show for the next four items, beginning with an item that was actually partially generated from council and for your direction. We are bringing back an overview of our activities as it pertains to the drought order, and at the same time, Mr. Zern will provide a policy outline and answer some questions for you as it pertains to the next steps with respect to the governor's executive order. So with that, Steve, you want to go through these?
Yes. Thank you, Scott. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as Mr. Ochoa indicated, council head had brought this item up and asked for us to get back to you on it. Obviously, there's been a flurry of activity over the last several weeks from Sacramento, all the way down here to the Metropolitan Water District, in response to this extended drought period that we're in. We are entering our fourth year of the current drought, and this is just a little, a bit of a historical perspective on droughts, recent droughts in California. The '76 to '77, which was a very short period, but considered to be one of the worst droughts that we've had, that is, until now. The more prolonged '87 to '92 drought, which was the driest period since the '20s, and the most recent event prior to the 2012 drought is the 2007, 2009. This is the first drought that had a statewide declaration, and it is the drought incident that caused us, you, as a council, to declare Stage 2 mandatory conservation for a short period of time. 2012 to the present, as I said, we enter the fourth year of what has been a historic drought. And this is from 1895, when records were originally kept. This is the driest, this is one of the hottest periods in our history. 2013 was the driest county year on record from a rainfall perspective, and just this past January and February, the two driest months in history for January and February. In fact, the temperatures in February were record-setting. Sierra snowpack is meager, to say the least. I think that's quite an understatement. And our reservoirs around the state are at record lows. Here's that snowpack scenario, just to give you an idea. On the left, January 13th, 2013, shows the Sierra Nevada snowpack. Exact same picture one year later, and the same time, January 13th, 2014, and you can see the mark difference. It looks like a different time of year. It almost looks like a desert-type condition. This year, January 2015, was even worse than what you see, the picture on the right.
And just to, this will be obvious to some people, but the relevance of this photo is that this is a lot of our water comes from the snowpack. So this isn't, this isn't just up there to show you what's going on in the Sierras for no reason, right?
Absolutely.
This is what will eventually come down through the Bay Delta and come down through the State Water Project and into Glendale.
The snowpack is a critical factor, thank you, Ms. Friedman, is a critical factor in water supply for the upcoming year, and in both Northern and Southern California. But as Ms. Friedman indicated, we've got a situation where we, you know, despite what the rainfall or lack thereof may be, you look the snowpack and hope that you've got enough to carry you through to keep the situation somewhat at bay. That's not the case. You can see here that we just haven't had the snowpack. You may have seen the governor when he declared his order. He was standing out near Lake Tahoe on dry, dusty, dirty ground at a time when there should have been literally several feet of snow on the ground, and it's just not there. These are just some pictures, 2011 to 2014. Same picture on the left is Lake Orville, near Redding, California. And there it is, and it isn't any better today. I can tell you if there's any water at all in that. Folsom Lake and Folsom Dam in Northern California. And this, and let me also, as I go back to this, also mention, today, many of you may have seen in the paper, that they've confirmed that Lake Mead, which is the lake behind Hoover Dam, will be at the all-time record low, 1,038 feet. That's the lowest it's been since they filled it 79 years ago. Nobody would have ever thought that lake would have reached those depths. And when that does reach that low depth, there are a number of measures that go into place that are restricting where that water goes, primarily to non-California states first, and then coming back to us. But this is a critical, Hoover Dam and Lake Mead are critical for the Colorado River Project, and that water that comes to us in California. Here's precipitation rates in Glendale, and this is generally the greater urban Los Angeles area, but Glendale is also part of that. You can see the last wet year, the last rainy year we had was 2011, where we did have quite a bit of precipitation, 20 inches, and it has just plummeted since then. It's risen a bit in 2015, but you can still see, it is nowhere near the conditions of 2011, when we had our last plentiful year. And plentiful is probably not the right word. That was just an average year. At the same time, you look at the temperatures that have gone, that have been recorded, annual temperatures, where we had a little bit of dip in 2012, but it's just steadily increased. So you've gone from 2012, where you had an average temperature of 64 degrees, to 2015, where at, to date, we're at 69 degrees, and we haven't even gone through haven't even gone through the summer yet. So it is, it is dry, and it is hot. Historical water sources in Glendale. As many of you know, we get our water from two particular sources, primarily from the Metropolitan Water District. As a founding member of that organization, it's about 70% on average, and you can see that pretty much plays out here. It's been lower in some years. The other source is our own well water, which is generally about 30%. On the left, or the green bar, is the MWD purchases that we've had since 2006, '07 to the present. The blue bar is the well water we've been able to claim from our own wells, and you can see the fluctuations. When you get to that fiscal year 10, 11, 11, 12, and we had a lot of that rain, you see that our well water went up, and that's a critical component. And then, on the other side, our MWD purchases go down. And that is critical, because as the drought continues, you see our well water begins to dry up. It's just, and it doesn't take long. Our wells are probably nearing the least amount of production we've had in many, many years. That 2015 figure that you see at 34% might be generous. We'll see. We've had to shut some wells down, just because there is, there's simply not enough production to keep the mechanical components of the well and the pumps running. Historical usage in Glendale. Again, you see the correlation now. In '06, '07, this is, this is water sales to our customers. We were selling nearly 32,000 acre feet in '06, '07. You see that figure begin to go down. You get the '9, '10, '10, '11 years, and the lavender-shaded bars are where we had mandatory conservation in place for all or part of that year. So '9, '10, '10, '11, you're in that, that last critical drought period. But you see, also in '10, '11, is when we, when we came out of the mandatory conservation, the rain hit that spring, and we began to realize a reduction in overall sales. Again, in full disclosure, 2010, probably '9, '10, was also when we had a slight drop in our population, but it was not, not so significant as to affect greatly the water consumption. I think what you're looking at here mostly is conservation efforts, and then you get the rain on the backside. Another thing, and this will be a theme as we go through this, and I will keep making this point. When you have the heavy rains, in that '10, '11 year especially, and you see the drop, certainly a lot of it had to do with conservation measures, but also that is an indication of where that water goes. It goes to the exterior. Exterior irrigation is the primary use of water in this city, in this region, in this state. That's where that water goes. So when it rains, you see a almost, it's instantaneous drop in our sales. So that's a critical, critical factor, because it's one we're going to have to talk a lot about, because that's where the focus of our recycling efforts, or excuse me, our conservation efforts, including recycling and recycled water usage, need to be focused. So as we go through the, from '11, '12 to '13, '14, you begin to see it goes up a little bit there, as some of the conservation efforts are out, and then we begin to hit that drought period again. And in August of last year of 2014, we put in mandatory, Phase 2 mandatory conservation, and we began to see a drop in our overall usage or sales. These are just some of the actions I had mentioned earlier, the flurry of activity that's taken place. In 2014, January 2014, the governor declared a drought state of emergency. Later that year, in the MWD, the Metropolitan Water District Board declared water supply alert throughout Southern California. These are mandatory restrictions that went into place. As time went on that spring last year, there's an executive order calling to the state to redouble its drought actions and put together programs that will address future droughts. In July, you, the city council, declared Phase 2 of its mandatory water conservation ordinance, really the first phase. Phase 1 is the ongoing volunteer phase. Phase 2 is the first mandatory component in our, in our water conservation ordinance, and that went into effect in late July, first of August. In March, the state water board extended the emergency water conservation regulations. Again, it's just continuing. And then, this is past month, or this month, excuse me, the beginning of this month, Governor Brown signed an executive order imposing mandatory restrictions and directing cities, agencies, counties, water districts to achieve a statewide 25% reduction in potable water. The MWD followed that up a few days later, a couple of weeks later, with their allocation program, which will be cutting back on their wholesale water deliveries to member agencies. What that means is about a 15% reduction in the supply that they are going to make available to their member agencies. That again forces us to begin to conserve Glendale's target. Now, when the governor signed his executive order and put in a statewide 25% reduction, the state water board is then who enforces that order. They, in turn, calculated that 25% to the individual cities and assigned a number. So while it's 25% statewide, not every city is, has the same number to, the same goal to reach. Those that have been very diligent and vigilant in their conservation efforts will get a lower number. Some of the lowest numbers are in Santa Cruz and San Francisco, around 8%. Those who have not been vigilant in their use of water have the highest rates, 36% in Beverly Hills, 36% in Newport Beach, and other communities. The City of Glendale received its conservation target number of 20%, which, and we based that, the base year for, for the comparison is the 2013, '14 water consumption for the City of Glendale. So while we are below the 25% number, we currently are targeted to 20%, and today, I will tell you, we're about 12%. So we've got some work to do. While we've done a very good job, our customers have done an excellent job in conserving water, we still have some work to do to meet that 20% goal.
So we have to go from 12% to 20%?
Correct. Based on today, and we had a little bit of a setback in February, because there was a greater water use than we had expected. That's usually a wet month, and if not, a rather cold month where exterior watering isn't as prevalent, and that wasn't the case. So we're going to have to, to do a little bit more to reach that 20%. And you'll see, as we put up our usage and we have a 20% line, where you can get a better idea on a graph.
Steve, is that calculated per household or per city? How do they look at that?
We report to the water board the total usage, so total sales, total usage for the city, and then they calculate off of that. We're currently, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We're currently in Phase 2 of the mandatory water conservation ordinance, as I mentioned, and those limit irrigation, exterior watering to three days a week for no more than 10 minutes per day at each watering station, those days, Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday. And then there are other water restrictions, and these are always in effect, even under our voluntary water, part of our water conservation ordinance. There are certain restrictions that we don't allow at any time, and those include hosing down hardscape paved areas, overspray of your sprinklers, in other words, having your sprinklers watering the sidewalk or the street and not properly maintaining them, your driveway, for instance. Decorative fountains must have water circulation systems, and we ask that you be vigilant in your, looking for water leaks and that they repair them in an expedient manner.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Watering three days, because this is based on personal experience, three days a week, 10 minutes per station. I live on a flat land. Some areas have burned area, and when you water it more than three, four minutes, you start getting runoff. The ground cannot absorb that water anymore. Is there a study, or do you know if they, if you water every day for four minutes a day or five minutes a day versus every other day for 10 minutes a day, would that, would that make a difference or not? Because on hillside areas especially, when you, when you water like four, five minutes, more than that, you're going to have a huge runoff.
And Councilmember Gurupetin, you're right. In those conditions, in those situations, you're looking at soil conditions and topography, which could be leading to a lack of absorption of the water. I'm not sure that, that short, you could try shorter periods of time, and then, under our ordinance, you can, you can water anywhere you want, under 10 minutes. But I think your question is, is that enough to sustain the vegetation if you were to water it two or three minutes a day versus 10 minutes a day? And I guess that depends on the vegetation. There's no studies I know of, but we can certainly inquire to...
No, what I was saying was, instead of watering 10 minutes every other day, water four minutes a day.
Yeah, and what I, what I think we'll do is take a look and see if we can find if there's any validity, validity to that particular issue. Our only concern is, is that when you go to everyday watering, or you allow everyday watering, it will be, people will take advantage of that situation, and I think we'll end up being right back to where we started. But that's, that's my opinion. But we'll take a look at it and see if there's any, any science that's behind that.
Okay.
Again, some of the, just the basic actions of Phase 2 and some of the other phases as well. There's no irrigation between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., so we'd like you to irrigate during those early morning and late evening periods, when the, when the evaporation is less likely to happen. No irrigation when the wind is blowing or when it's raining, obviously. Handwashing of commercial, non-commercial, privately-owned vehicles should be done with a handheld bucket. Any type of hand-watering, or the use of drip irrigation or bubbler systems, those are all really, really recommended and encouraged.
And you can do those every day?
Absolutely. You can use a hose with a, with a, with a nozzle that shuts off. You can water your lawn every day with that. You can use a drip irrigation system, or as I said, a bubbler system, and you can use that as often as you like. And again, we have restrictions on car washing and car washes and professional car washing operations as well. Construction, fire hydrants only used for firefighting, so we try to limit, that really reflects back on us, try to limit the amount of time that we run fire hydrants for whatever various maintenance reasons we do. In dining establishments, and you'll see, I've handed you all one of the table tents that we use. We ask the restaurants to only serve drinking water when asked, yes.
Can we go back to the hydrants for a minute?
Sure.
I know that we use potable water to flush those hydrants out, because I've seen them do it. Can we capture that water back again? Because I've seen hundreds of gallons of water be taken out of our fire hydrants and flushed down the street, and it's a terrible example to set.
Yes, and Ms. Friedman, that's really what it is. It's a terrible, it is a terrible example. So it's one of the reasons why we've ceased doing it, because it just doesn't look good. From a strictly a cost-benefit basis, it costs a lot more for us to try to capture it and then try to find a place for it, believe it or not. And, but I agree with the idea, is we don't want to be cavalier in how we handle our own operations and set a poor example. So we've cut back on that. So it's only in a dire emergency. Really, we'll leave it to the firefighters and the fire department to maintain the hydrants. As far as, if they need to use them, that's fine. If it's for an emergency purpose, that's fine. But we're going to greatly restrict our exercising and running of those hydrants during the drought period. Enforcement activities, and this has become a, really a hot issue right now. The governor has introduced, or has asked for legislation to be introduced to, to set up a fine system at the state level that then allows cities to enforce these fines of up to $10,000 a day. The state water board already has that ability to do it. The City of Glendale already has that ability to do it. We have, in our section of the code, an infraction process through our code enforcement folks, where they can be written up, and it starts with fines that is low as $100, up to $1,000 a day. There's also some, we're doing some work now to have some administrative abilities to issue citations out of even GWP on a similar fine schedule as that. Keeping in mind that our, our objective has been to use education and information. We did not want to make criminals out of our residents who are simply trying to water their houses, their yards. So we wanted to use education and information. But as things begin to ratchet up, and as we begin to see folks who, it's more than just a matter of not knowing what's going on, but are intentionally violating the ordinance, and the fact that we're going to be held, our feet are going to be held to the fire by the state, and others who are going to pass down fines to us, we need to look at being a little bit more vigilant in how we handle at least those gross violators and egregious violators of the code and the ordinance. So we'll be, currently what we do is, if we have an anonymous water report line, you see there, you call in, or we have a lot of people who aren't afraid to be, to come right out and give their name as well. We contact the individual via letter. If we, also we'll make direct contact, put door hangers, just letting them know what the ordinance says and what the restrictions are in case they weren't aware of that. If we get repeat offenders, we get a little bit stronger-worded letter. What we're going to do now is, is change that to actually be a warning letter. So that courtesy letter that goes out now turns into a warning letter. So it is still very professional and very courteous, but at the same time is going to tell you, this is a warning. We're under severe drought conditions. This is the city's ordinance. These are the fines that you're, you're subject to. And then from there, like I said, for those that are just obviously violating the ordinance repeatedly, we're going to go and start looking at issuing these infractions and citations. I think we've covered everything there. Oh, the last bullet, just so, so folks know, because we have a little bit of a conflict when it comes to this, and that is, we're obviously, as I said, targeting exterior irrigation, and that's going to affect your vegetation and your lawn, so you're going to see some brown lawns, or less-than-lush green lawns, as we cut down the ability for you to use your irrigation systems. So in the code, as part of the code enforcement process, brown lawns could be a, could be a violation, and you could be cited for that. So, once we put in the mandatory conservation measures, at the same time, working with the community development department, we will suspend the brown law, brown lawn laws that are within the code, so that we aren't writing people up for, for being good stewards of the water during these critical periods. And as I mentioned, through, from August of 2014, when the mandatory conservation ordinance, Phase 2, went into effect up until the last full month in March, our consumption has been reduced by about 12%. That's with, against that base comparison period in 2013, '14. And again, as I mentioned, winter, the winter months were much warmer than we had expected, much warmer than they have been, in fact, on record, and that led to a little bit greater water use in those winter months. Total monthly sales since August 1st. So if we go back to when that mandatory conservation effort went in, you're seeing the blue bar on the left side of the graph is the 2013, or 14 actuals, so that's the base year. And then you're looking at the green bar, which is 2014, 2015 actuals. So as you go through, you can see where we have made reductions, not as great as we hoped. The red line you see is the 20%. That's where we would need to be, to be compliant with, with the current state water board regulation and the, and the governor's order. So as I mentioned, we're about 12%, so we got a little bit of ways to go there. But, you know, again, you see, one of the anomalies that we deal with is, is we start to get our warmest temperatures towards the fall. So September, certainly August, but September and October, and if you look, October was the highest water use month in 2013, '14, and almost, just about the highest month in 2014, '15, at least compared to what we have and what we project. So, again, we aren't getting that, that pre-fall rain. We're getting our hot season is continuing right on through into the fall. City facilities, and the example we're setting, we talked a little bit before about, with the fire hydrants, but we have a number of our facilities. We're one of the largest water users in the city, and so we have an obligation to set an example and to comply with the laws as much as anyone. You can see the picture there. That is the state Capitol as of last week. So they've completely stopped watering the lawn in front of the Capitol, and it's already gone dead. All of you have been there at one time or another and know the lush green lawn that's in front. It's no longer there. So with that, as the backdrop, just some bullet points on the cutbacks we've made. We've made cutbacks on our irrigation at all of our city sites, and when I say city sites, that includes buildings, parks, medians. In the governor's executive order, it specifically targets publicly-owned medians, public right-of-way medians, that they cannot be, they cannot have ornamental turf irrigated with potable water. So if you have ornamental turf on your medians, you cannot use potable water to irrigate those. The good news for us is most of our medians are already irrigated with recycled water. So the large medians, Glen Oaks, color, excuse me, Brand, Glendale Avenue, those are already on reclaimed water systems, and have been for some time. All of us, and when I say us, the Public Works Department, the Water and Power Department, the Parks Department, are coordinating on, not only the medians, but Jess and his staff are looking at other ornamental turf areas within the parks, low-use areas that could, where turf replacement could take place, trying to just focus the grass in those recreational areas where it's needed most, and seeing if there are options to remove turf areas at other parts of the parks. Public Works is looking at the city facilities, including out here in front of City Hall and... Public Works is looking at the city facilities, including out here in front of City Hall, and what some options might be for turf replacement there. Again, the theme is going after that outside landscaping, where most of the water is being used, and especially the turf. There's just no two ways about it. You know, trees, shrubs, hedges, yes, they do take a certain amount of water, but once established, not as much water as other plant life, but certainly not as much as turf. Turf, by and far, requires the most water of any landscape feature. So we're looking at all the different ways in all of our facilities that we can either begin to reduce that or eliminate it altogether. GWP as well, looking at our pump stations, substations, our utility operations center, we're actually going through and starting to remove it now. We're just going to take it out now. We think we have an obligation to set the prime example as the water purveyor for the city, and so that's what we're going to do. And all of the city operations are eligible for grant funding under MWD, so the turf replacement program, and we're looking at that. Parks will be looking at that, we're looking at that as well. So to the extent that we can get some assistance from them on replacing turf, getting some money for that, helping that offset the cost of re-landscaping the areas, we're going to do that. We're also aggressively pursuing recycled water system grant funding. The state has a couple of programs where funding is available for that, and we're going to submit several projects to try to expand our recycled program. And again, you've seen some of the things we've done, turned the fountains off, reallocating some of our capital improvement funds to recycled water systems versus potable water systems, and then just going through a number of internal policies and procedures to see where we can help contribute on our end to conserving water. This is just a brief look at what some of the other cities in our area are doing. South Pass, Crescent Valley Water District, and Foothill Water District have already gone to two-day-a-week watering. Burbank's going to be having their public hearing, we don't know when, it should be sometime within the next month, and Pasadena is going to their council in May, and they'll have some similar overview and discussion on where they want to take their conservation effort. Here's where we get to another question that had come up, and this is about development. So this just goes through a little bit of what the difference in the types of development we have in the city, single-family versus multifamily. The green bar is single-family, the blue bar is multifamily. So you can see that the per-person-per-day use is significantly less in a multifamily dwelling. And what's that, what's the reason for that? Exterior watering. There just is, there's very little exterior watering at multifamily buildings. What turf they have is small, they usually try to utilize the entire lot. Some of our downtown development, there's been questions about how the downtown development that we've recently gone through has affected us. It's been minimal, because those especially have very little landscaping, no turf. Interior water conservation is, has become, if anything, a pretty well ingrained and pretty much a way of life for folks. If it isn't just the habits that you practice in your house, it's the fixtures and appliances you buy that the industry has already made water efficient.
I would think that our newer buildings are actually lower than that, because you're counting buildings there that could be 40 years old.
Correct.
50 years old, that have toilets that use 13 gallons of flush, and all of those things.
Absolutely. The building codes in and of themselves have dictated that the newest buildings, and in my report I indicate that, where I say these buildings have had a negligible impact on our water usage because of those reasons, little or no landscaping, and the most energy-efficient and water-conserving appliances and fixtures that are on the market today.
Let me ask you this, though. So that target is for this year?
Correct.
If they continue that next year, is there a growth allocation or a growth allowance? Or do you have to continue to conserve based on this year's?
That's an issue that's being discussed vigorously if we do go, and how you'll recalculate that number.
Right.
So do you have to keep doing 20% on top of 20% on top of 20%? Yeah, there's an inequity there.
Right. Because Met's always given cities a growth allocation.
Yes.
They've always assumed that the amount of water you should be using increases every year because they assume you're going to grow every year. So I think people need to also understand that, that the assumption is that next year, even though you'll still have that percentage, the amount of residents you're sort of considered to have will increase.
Right. And the state water board is taking that under consideration. The California Municipal Utilities Association and MWD, they look to those kind of agencies to help guide them through that. You know, the hope is, is that we can reach the 20% or the 25% the governor wants, and we'll see rain start to come. But, you know, as I said again in the report, the experts, the scientists are saying it doesn't, they don't see any end in sight right now. So we've got to keep forging ahead, and when we get to setting the number for the next year, you're absolutely right. Consideration needs to be made for how successful you've been in your conservation efforts and the growth of your city for two that I can think of off the top of my head. So residential, so the multifamily versus single-family. Residential accounts for 74% of the total water consumed in Glendale. 51% of that water goes to single-family households, 49% to multifamily households. However, single-family households make up only 40%, or excuse me, 31% of the housing stock. Well, multifamily makes up 69%. So even though multifamily is nearly 70% of the residential housing stock, they're using less than half of the water for residential units. And again, here we go, the same thing. 40% of single-family customer household water goes inside, 60% is for outdoor use. And we've, I've underlined that, I can't emphasize it enough, reducing landscape water, exterior irrigation is the biggest impact on water conservation. The state water board has said if we address that issue alone, if we didn't look at anything else, we just looked at outside irrigation and turf replacement, we'd meet the 25% without a problem.
Can I ask this?
Absolutely.
Is that why we're not looking at changes in the code or any other ways of conserving? Because we think that we can meet this 20% with what we're doing right here?
Yes. Councilmember Devine, I think that it's, it sounds easy, but it isn't that easy. You know, being Californians, there's a couple of things that are hard to do, and that's give up your car and give up your lawn. Everybody loves their car and their lawn. So that, we think by addressing that and going after that, we can, we can meet the goal. So we don't think there's a need to put anything, you know, too sophisticated in the code at this point in time while we watch what the results of this are.
One quick question. If, when we get to that 20% because of water usage rate goes down, are we going to increase our rates because our volume is going down?
That's a very good question, Mr. Garapetin. Currently under Phase Two, and that's why when we get to the recommendations, you'll see that I'm not recommending we change the drought rate, but we leave it at Phase Two. That's designed for 20%. So at this point in time, that's our goal and that's our objective. If we stay within that, there's not a need for us to make any increases to the rates at this time. Although, I want to go to the next phase simply because I need that two-day-a-week exterior watering. That's the sole reason. And the state's dictating that, and I think that's where we want to go. But from a financial standpoint, at this point, we're going to be fine. I'm recommending that we put a six-month moratorium on it. If something occurs, I'll come back and update you on that. But this time, there isn't a recommendation to raise the rates.
Okay.
And again, just some more information on, from 2011 to 2015, our population increased by approximately 2.8%, while our overall water usage in both single-family and multifamily dropped marginally, but did drop. Recycled water system, just a brief overview, this is the infrastructure we have in place, 21 miles of lines, six pump stations, five storage tanks, and we've invested to date about $20 million in the system, and we have a total of 45 recycled water customers. We want to expand that. And here's three of the projects that we're putting forth to the state under the Proposition 1 and 84, recycled, potential recycled grants. It's a cooperative effort with Hoover Keppel Toll on bringing recycled water to the schools, the Comino San Rafael Homeowners Association, and the Chevy Oaks Homeowners Association, who you saw come to, or no, actually, they came to the GWP commission meeting. And then we're putting in a reclaim line across the Public Works yard. So that'll be used for street sweepers and tree watering. So they'll have a hydrant. We'll also put a hydrant at the fire training center, if they want to use it for their training exercises, which uses quite a bit of water. And just some of our outreach activities, and a lot of these are programs that are already in place. You'll see on the right, we have a picture of one of the brochures or items, and I gave you, all of you, a stack of those that you have with you. But it's just, we're in the Phase Two notification. We try to get as much information, brochures, bill advertisements, letters. We've got Beeline advertising, we've got Bus Shelter advertising. I think Councilmember Devine had asked about banners. We have banners on the way. We'll put them on the vertical banner poles along Brand and Foothill and some of the other areas. We'll put them on the bridge at Glendale College. So we're going to try to get that message out as much as we can. A lot of these programs have been in place for a long time, and we have never dropped them. We need to get a little bit more intense with them now, but they've been in place as we've continued to ask people to conserve. And we'll be, obviously, coordinating with Mr. Lorenz in his office, so it's sort of communication central, and putting out the greater message, cooperating on social media and those type of things. Tom, I don't know if you want to...
Mayor Najarian and members of city council, Mr. Zern, our department, what we try to do is capitalize on what his department or any department in the city does in regards to communication efforts. Through Mr. Keenan's office and Ms. Tina Hartunian, they do a fantastic job in regards to their communication efforts and getting different types of mediums out there. One of them is some of the stuff that you have in front of you. Beyond that, what we try to do is capitalize on all the social media platforms that we have in the city. More often than not, our city departments have demographic followings, they have groups of people that follow, but they may not necessarily care about following another department. Libraries Arts and Culture, believe it or not, is one of the most popular in the city of Glendale, but they may not want to follow Police, Fire, or the Water and Power Department. But during times like this, when we need to get the message out to all our different demographics that follow our different departments, and we have about 10 different social media platforms, Fire, Police, Water, Power, Public Works, the City Clerk's Office, HR, I can just go on, Parks, et cetera, and so on. We have about 10,000 Twitter followers combined in those different social media platforms, and then combined with our newsletters, we have 30,000-plus unique and unduplicated email addresses. That's a lot. And we've built that over a period of three years, and that's, again, a partnership with the different departments. When they try to send their message out through their newsletters, and I know the, GWP has the source, we use what's called City Connection, and we have a tremendous open rate. I can tell you that in September, shortly after the first tier, when this was brought to council, we reached over 14,000 people, open, actually opened that newsletter. We had three other newsletters that had water conservation efforts, some of the stuff that Steve did touch on here, and on an average, those newsletters that had the water conservation efforts in there had anywhere between an 11,000 and 13,000 open rate. And that is an open rate within the first week the newsletter went out. Beyond that, we try to visualize a lot of stuff we do. We're trying to seize the opportunities beyond what just Steve's operation does. You have the vision, and you have the policymakers, and sometimes you do some great things that sometimes you don't maybe capture the value. For example, we were highlighted right after Governor Brown announced this 25% water, we've got to save water, and Maryland Park became the highlight with a lot of our Greater Los Angeles media outlets because of the Public Works Department and Community Services and Parks of being a water-wise-type park, drought-tolerant park, and it actually won an award. And so those are the things we try to capitalize to get the attention of the public and understand that there's more going on here, and being green is great. I think one of the things that we do best is create our own villages within those that want to be green and save water. Those are groups like savewater.com, SoCalWaterSmart, Be Waterwise, MWD, working with them and creating that village. When they have 20, 30, 40, 50,000 people, and we send misinformation out through those platforms, we are actually reaching hundreds of thousands of people. I think when you try to look at the return on our investment, immediately after GWP's campaign initially, and getting to this 12%, if you look at what's happened in other cities, we're doing a tremendous job in saving water. Finally, I know the MWD has a consortium of about 26 cities they serve, and about 17 million people that get water. One of the greatest things, and one of the greatest assets we have, is that people tend to talk about what's important to them, and I think over time, not only will we see a trend in Glendale, but we're going to see more of a trend to do more to save water. And finally, if you haven't seen a lot of our new presentations that we were working with Steve on, capital improvement projects with GTV6 trying to visualize what we're doing, we've got some more that we're probably going to be working on, and hopefully we can support GWP and what they're doing in their operation, and then capitalize with all the other departments in getting the message out to the rest of the city.
Are those PSAs that you're talking about?
Yes.
Educational PSAs? Because I think those would be important.
Right. And then the walking public, too. I don't know if you've seen the boards, the banners that went up in the buses and places, but they're pretty good. They've done a real good job with it. And then we take that and we push it to the next level.
So we have these in electronic format?
We do have them in electronic, digital format. They're online on their website, and then we take them and we push them out through the social media platforms, and then we follow, or actually the different other platforms follow us, and it multiplies. We try to create a synergy, we want to be the force multiplier in what they're doing, and the answer is yes, they are, and they're in multiple languages.
So exactly. So maybe, I mean, I'd like to push them out on my social media, too.
Right. And you know, every week, I try to send you the information, and I ask you to, if you desire to push, use our hashtag and @myglendale. I can send you GWP's information also, because I think it's important that we include their hashtag, and then we'll create more synergy there.
That'd be great.
My question was, may I? Dealing with the state, do they consider the largest program, or do they look at the bigger picture as to the agricultural? Because 80% of the water that California uses is agricultural, not homeowners, not the 40% or 60%, and the golf courses. And agricultural is, my understanding, there was a report from JPL that it's like 2.5% of the, maybe less than that, 2% of the California's economy. I mean, what is the, what is state's position on that issue? As to how, we are being, you know, I'm not against conserving water, but I'm just trying to understand what is the logic, or, you know, the way they approach agricultural issue there?
Councilmember Garapetin, I'm not sure I can answer about the logic, but as you know, this is a fight, and it's been a fight for as long as this state has been populated. Farmers fighting for their rights to the water, fighting cattle barrens, fighting urban areas. I think I've seen more movement during this period than I ever have with wanting to take some restrictions on the agricultural industry. I think you've seen the reaction, you've seen almond farmers, pistachio farmers begin to go right to the public saying, you know, raisin farmers saying, it's gone, you're not going to get almonds, or almonds are going to cost more than, you know, than gasoline does. So you begin to see this, you know, this debate beginning to rage on, but I think that, not beginning to rage on, it's continuing to rage on, but I think you're seeing the state take a little stronger action. What that means at the end of the day, I'm not sure, but they're taking a little stronger action with the farmers, because it's causing quite a reaction from them. So we'll see how that goes. That's a fight I sure wouldn't want to be involved in at that level, but certainly as municipalities and as the water begins to become more scarce, we'll likely be drawn into that anyway, and I think it's going to be our, we'll be defending our citizens and our customers against agriculture, and I think, I think what people are looking for is equity. We're asking the agriculture industry to do the same thing we're doing, and that's be efficient in the water use. And I think that's one of the biggest issues, is they're not efficient. The watering, the way they water is the cheapest way to water, and a lot of times it's the most wasteful. So just to say, can you put in a system that's more efficient in watering? It's not that you're not going to be able to get your crops the water they need, just do it more efficiently. But that costs money, and there's been a reluctance to do that. So I think that's really where the push is going to come, and us as consumers, and water purveyors and water users are going to have to get involved in that through the various organizations we have. That's where I'm thinking we're at right now.
Are you done, Mr. Zern?
I'm almost finished, Mr. Zern.
I'd like to get through this and get to the action. We've got an evening ahead of us still, and...
So we're just, here's...
Push onward.
Here's just some of the, Mr. Lorenz mentioned, what's gone up on bus stops and buses, so that's some of what we have there. And just again, turf replacement, our water-wise gardening, residential and business programs, and there's our recommendation. We're asking, I'm asking you to allow us to move into Phase Three, which is primarily the two-days-a-week irrigation. That'll be Tuesdays and Saturdays for 10 minutes each station. The rest of the provisions are pretty much stay in place. We do need to add the second bullet. We do need to add the second bullet. That's something the state has required us to add, so we'll have to put that into our ordinance as well. And again, I would like to defer the Phase 3 drought rate. Keep the Phase 2 drought rate where it's at right now, and for six months, and if there's a need for us to change that, I'll come back and talk to you. But otherwise, I'm confident that we'll meet all of our goals with this series of recommendations. And with that, any questions?
You have a question. Along with our conservation efforts that we're doing at the city, replacing turf, that sort of thing, are we also looking at capturing rainwater on-site and building types of irrigation that allow for drainage on-site and then water to percolate back up, like in large pieces of property, like dry riverbeds or biomes wells, that sort of thing?
I think the best answer to that is, that's a longer-term evaluation. We're really looking at kind of some of the things that we can do immediately, and really going after the turf replacement.
But I do think that as we do capital projects, this needs to be part of our planning, because I don't think in three years, we say, "Hey, let's start installing this." I think as we're doing, and I'm not saying go and create new projects to do this necessarily, but as we are building new parks, as we're replacing roads, we should always be looking now at ways of capturing water on-site. I know that we've looked at water permeable pavement for our streets. I think we need to be more aggressive about that. I mean, stormwater, as you know, is a related issue that's also going to be expensive. So, this is something that I think we need to build right now into our policies and our methods for doing our capital projects and our roadwork. We haven't been doing that, and other cities have been doing it, and I've, you know, I've brought this up in the past, you know, many times, but I think now is the time to start investing that money in doing that as we, integrating that into projects that are ongoing and projects that are planned.
The LID or Low-Impact Development Ordinance will be coming to you this summer, according to Mr. Golani in Public Works.
And I believe there's a Green Street project that's coming up, a pilot project coming up in the next couple of weeks for consideration, so. And I know Mr. Duran is looking at that in the parks as well.
I would also like to see, when you're bringing stuff back, a review of our ordinances regarding gray water.
Yes.
I know a lot of it's in the UBC and some other higher-level ordinances, but let's come back and see where we are with that. And speaking of, what did you describe it, as the exterior landscape watering problem? When is the artificial turf coming back?
That is scheduled to come back to you, I believe, on the 19th of May.
You know, I had asked for advanced notice to prepare. That's not enough time, you know, I had asked to be warned ahead of time, because there's a lot of folks out there that want to weigh in on this issue, and telling them in two weeks or three weeks.
We do a lot of things with two weeks' notice, but...
It's the council's pleasure. The report is being finalized, so it can be June, if you like. It doesn't, it's up to the council.
I'd like to do it as soon as possible. The drought's not getting any better. Council, you know, is willing to take any sort of input, but, you know, I think two weeks' notice, more than two weeks, we're at three weeks' notice, should be sufficient to get any information to council. Is there something that would take longer than three weeks, or...
Well, it's just, I mean, as Mr. Ochoa will attest, I've asked for enough advanced notice, because I know that there's groups that are interested in weighing in, and, you know, if it's the Sierra Club, they may need, you know, I can't just tell them, "By the way, in two weeks, please show up." I think that they may need a little bit more time. I'm not trying to drag it out. I'm looking forward to having the debate. I just want to, I had asked for advanced notice, and I wasn't given it, so, and I rarely ask for that, but in this case, I did ask for it, and I'm sort of surprised to hear that it's coming back so soon.
It's not that soon.
Then, again, it's council's pleasure. I can, the report can be done as, not earlier than the 19th, and I will tell you that 19th is your budget hearing, so if you'd like to push that back, certainly you can. To early June would probably be the next available date.
In fact, I was hoping, I know that we have the president of the Homeowners Coordinating Council, I was hoping to try to get some, you know, people in front of them so that they could hear the different sides of the issue, so that we have a robust outreach to the community about all the facets of this before we're asked to make a decision, so they can weigh in, you know, in an educated way. So, that would be my preference.
And keep in mind, we don't presume that the council will definitively make a decision on the 19th. You may give us more direction on the 19th. We will have a series of options for you, but again, it's the council's pleasure.
And how much time will be a sufficient time, council member?
Maybe instead of three weeks, maybe a month, you know, maybe six weeks? I'm not asking for, I'm not saying put it off until the end of the year.
I'm happy to defer this if local groups, if our residents need more time, but I don't, I'm not going to give more time for outside, I mean, outside groups to come in and, you know, give us their opinion on what Glendale should do. I'm willing to listen to my residents. If the residents say we need more time, that's a different story than the Sierra Club coming in and saying, "Hold on, Glendale, we need more time to come in." So, three weeks is a lot of time, Ms. Friedman, I mean. Anyway, that's not the, that's not the issue before us, right? Let's not get sidetracked on the issue before us, which are the recommendations for amending the water conservation ordinance, and implementing Phase 3, and delaying the Phase 3 drought charge.
I have two comments. First of all, looking into the future and acting now, what about future development? I know some of the, the Lexon Orange, I believe, is dual-plumbed, so that the, are we, is that in the codes for the, or the ordinances for new development coming in the future? Because I think that's absolutely necessary.
Councilmember Divine, there are many, many aspects of the code that are already in place, but that's the next step for us, is between the City Attorney's Office, GWP, and Community Developments to sit down and go through all the codes, whether it involves exterior landscaping requirements to indoor plumbing and dual plumbing and those kind of things.
Okay, and that's coming back. And number two, you mentioned that if we decide, or if you come back with this, the drought charges, you will come to council, please, and let us know, and give us a report if you are planning on raising that?
Absolutely, actually...
Said, just letting it happen?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
I think it would probably be a good time to give you an update, and we'll give you a brief update on that. It'll be November about then, so we will have gotten through the summer, and we'll see where we're at.
So, the two-days watering is going to be 10 minutes?
Per station.
Per station, per day?
Per day, of those two days.
Of those two days, yeah. I'm just going to go back to my, the first comment I made. Would you, do you think it's wise to do like seven minutes in three days? Because if I want to run my sprinklers for 15 minutes, nobody's going to catch me. It doesn't matter if it's two days a week or four days a week, but I think our residents are responsible enough to, if you water seven minutes, three days, I think it's much better than 10 minutes, two days, because if you have a four-days lapse in between, it's like, I think it's like a Band-Aid solution for the lungs. I'm watering every other day, it's just, it's just a suggestion or a question, I don't know. Instead of Tuesdays and...
Saturdays.
Saturdays. We can still keep it on the same three days, but seven minutes a day.
And I think, and obviously, that's the direction you want me to look at revising the ordinance, but we patterned this after, you know, the industries talked to experts, looked at different things, and at the end of the day, we've got to reduce the amount of water, plain and simply. We've got to reduce that amount of exterior turf watering. And so, you know, the next, the next level, if we find ourselves in Phase 4, that's one day a week for 15 minutes. And then Phase 5 is two days a month for 20 minutes.
I think it's also worth pointing out that, and I think the councilman is indicating this as well, that it's, you're not required to do it for 10 minutes, but that's the maximum amount. To the extent that the language that you have here is something that's been vetted, it's been discussed by water agencies throughout the state, I think it's a little bit better to have a standard that if this is what Glendale is doing in compliance with the governor's order, and LA will do something similar, and Burbank will do something similar, and Pasadena will follow suit, if the standard is altogether moving in this direction, as it appears that it is, then it makes it a little bit easier for all of our, of all of our customers and customers throughout the region to be able to understand and accept it, as opposed to saying, "Ours are somewhat unique, you know, and Glendale has a different standard than somebody else in another part of the region." You know, moreover, if you have trees on your property, for example, the trees may need more water, you know, fewer days, but longer periods of time, all that goes into the discussion that got us to this point. Now, if council wants us to explore it differently, then we would basically have to revise the ordinance and come back to you at a later date.
And if I, I'm, yes, Ms. Friedman, please.
Well, is that a different...
I was just going to make mention that we are looking, again, with the City Attorney's Office at stretching the use of our electronic meters as an enforcement tool, because we can tell exactly when you water, what time you water, and how much you water, just pressing a button. So, to the extent that we can use that as an enforcement tool, we'll have to see what the legalities of that are. I bring that up because if we're able to do that and do it effectively, it may, that level of enforcement may allow us to have some more flexibility with...
Yeah, that's assuming if I have a...
Ho, 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 ho. That, I mean, let's talk about that.
We're talking to the City Attorney's Office.
This is a question that came up when we were doing the whole smart meter program, and we were told that there was not going to be this sort of monitoring, and I don't want to get too far off on this.
We don't, we don't do it except for leak detection. We do, we do it for leak detection, but there, as part of the enforcement, we were just going to explore the option, not do it until, obviously, we'd had approval, that we can use that as an enforcement tool for violators of certain amounts of water. For instance, we have, we're going to send 5,000 letters out to the highest users of water in the city. We have a single-family home that uses as much as 8,900 gallons a day. It's a lot of water, so.
Well, just to be fair, I received a call from GWP about a couple of months ago that I have a leak, and there was a leak. It was in my landscape piping, and when we were watering, it was underneath, we couldn't see, it was in the ground, the pipes are in the ground, so with all the fairness that worked, but as far as monitoring who waters, how many minutes, I don't know about that. But that assuming if I have a timer, if I'm manually watering, you know, I mean, I don't think we want to get into that, but that was just a suggestion.
I have one other question. The turf replacement program, which is very popular, do we have a limited amount of funds in that? Is that something that people should worry, we're going to run out of money halfway through the year? Do they need to put their application in right now, or are we good for what we think we're going to need?
It's actually, Ms. Friedman, an MWD program. It's their funding, and the last we understood was that there was plenty of funding, and they were looking at even...
Okay, I didn't realize that we had a certain amount of that. Okay, so it's really, basically, just goes straight to the, to Matt?
Correct.
Because DWP in LA adds on to it.
They do add on to it, so they have a, they have a dual program, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Before I ask for a motion, we have a speaker card from Tamara Movsesian.
Ms. Movsesian said she was here for another issue, but since the issue being discussed right now is water, she'd like to speak on water, and she's requesting that someone translate for her.
We, we don't have a translator. We've been through this before. This is an issue she's going to raise later in the evening, which we...
[speaking Armenian].
However, do I have any volunteers to summarize, not a word-by-word translation, but a brief summary of her remarks?
I can certainly...
Those who are perhaps more fluent in Armenian than I am.
I can certainly try. I can certainly try.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
How many, how many minutes?
Three minutes.
[speaking Armenian].
I'm going to summarize that.
Okay, summarize.
[speaking Armenian].
I'm trying to get...
[speaking Armenian].
I'm going to summarize that. Okay, summarize.
I just wanted to summarize.
[speaking Armenian].
I'm trying to get...
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 [speaking Armenian].
I'm going to summarize that.
Okay, summarize.
[speaking Armenian].
I'm trying to get...
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 I'm going to summarize that.
Okay, summarize.
[speaking Armenian].
I'm trying to get...
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 [speaking Armenian].
Mr. Clark.
Ms. Movsesian suggested that one of the solutions to the water shortage is right along the entire coast of California, the ocean water.
along the entire coast of California, the ocean water. She said that one of the things that it can be used for, that doesn't require, she didn't use the term potable, but drinkable water, is to put out fires. She says there are experts who can figure this out. Other uses for it would be to use it for toilets, something that could also use ocean water. It is not necessarily required that it be a specific kind of water. And she said that they should think about what other issues can also be addressed by this use of water from the ocean. She said recycling is expensive, you know, Bill Gates even mentioned this on Jimmy Fallon the other night. And she suggested, lastly, that, she suggested that experts look into this, especially those that have a considerable amount of wealth. After all, they're gonna be giving their money to taxable charities, or tax-free charities anyways, they can look into this. And she, lastly, requested, on behalf of all the Armenian and Latino residents of the city, that there should be a translator on hand, because many people who wish to come and address the council in those languages feel intimidated and don't do so.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, for that good job. Ms. Friedman.
Well, I just wanted to make a comment about the speaker's comment. I, I thank her for bringing that up. There are, this will be my last comment on this, but I just thought it would be, just wanted to say, there are a lot of ways that we can capture and use more water in Southern California. There's more capture of rainwater, there's increasing storage, there's increasing use of reclaimed water, these desalination, there's all sorts of things. But what all of those sources have in common is that they all require large expenditures of money towards capital. And so, someone had asked earlier, well, are we gonna have to raise water rates? Well, unless there's a lot more rain, if we don't wanna keep conserving, if we wanna try to, to use, to have more water, and to water yards again, and to do all of those things, and kinda be back where we were, the other thing that we have to do is to spend money to build more storage, to, to extend piping, to capture rainwater, to do all sorts of, of things, but all of it does require money. Desalination, which comes up all the time, is almost triple the price of what we're paying now for water that comes down from the Bay Delta through the California Water Project and the Colorado River. So, there is water out there, it's just expensive. We can take wastewater and filter it to a very high degree, and use that to recharge our aquifer, which I think is the future, you know, and something that's being done in, in Southern California already, but again, it's expensive. So, we need to be prepared, if this drought continues, for the fact that water will continue to cost more money, as we need more and more of the resource. So, the, the days of cheap water, where we pay very little for it, and we just take it for granted, and it's something that should be free, those days are just over. They're over in Southern California. And I think people are starting to realize that this is a precious resource, that's really been undervalued over the years, to the point where people think that they shouldn't have to pay for it, or they shouldn't have to conserve. So, that, that's my kind of dire prediction for the future. No matter what we do, water rates will go up, even if this city council doesn't raise them, Metropolitan will raise them, or other sources of water will, will charge us more for that water. Hesley will stop getting free water from the national forest. We found out that they're getting water to be bottled for free from, I think it's the, from, from the Lake Arrowhead area, or wherever it is. They're gonna probably have to start paying for that water, too.
Okay. We have an item before us. Two resolutions and an ordinance for introduction. Would anyone care to move the resolution implementing Phase III of the Water Conservation Ordinance?
Second.
Shall we take these one at a time?
You can do both if you want, Ms. Friedman.
Okay. And the second is a resolution delaying the imposition of the applicable Phase III water conservation drought rate, and maintaining the currently effective Phase II drought rate during Phase III conservation for a period of six months.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so let's take roll on 8A1 and 2, please.
Council members, divine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Barpetian.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Yes. We have an ordinance for introduction at 8A3.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next item, please.
At 8B is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Unit Number Two Full Static Exciter System Upgrade at the Grayson Power Plant. B1 is a resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing to issue a request for proposals.
Mr. Zern, how's your voice? Is it holding up?
Yes, fine, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll be real quick on this. This is a procedure issue. We, we have a particular unit that we wanna try something different. As you know, whenever I come to you with power plant-related issues, I, I often have to sole-source that because of the age of the equipment. In this particular case, we're asking to dispense with a formal competitive bidding process, and then to go out with a RFP process, also competitive, but we wanna do a hybrid, a design-build type of a scenario, where we can get professional services and the actual construction work all in one package. And to do that, we need to go through an RFP and have a little bit different evaluation process, and then bring back our recommendation to you, much the same way we do with a formal bid, but a little bit different. So, we're simply asking your approval to do that.
Okay. Are there any questions on that from council? If not, there is a resolution at 8 dispensing with competitive bidding. And it's not sole-sourcing it, so you're...
Correct.
It's not a bid process, it's a request for proposal process.
Correct. And it'll be, it'll also be an evaluation, a competitive evaluation process, and we bring back the results of that, and a recommendation for award to you. It's just that a, a standard, a standard public works bidding process is not appropriate, we believe, for this complex of a type of, and specialized piece of equipment.
There's other components involved in, in the project. Okay, would someone introduce, would someone move at 8B1? Or have any questions that they'd like answered?
I'll move the item.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Council members, divine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Barpetian.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Sanan, Mayor Njarian.
Yes. Next item, please.
It's General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Aggregate Net Energy Metering. C1's ordinance for introduction. Here's a resolution amending and suspending Resolution Number 13-233 pertaining to net surplus electricity compensation payable to net surplus customer generators. And C3 is a motion adopting standard form interconnection agreement with net energy metering.
Mr. Zern.
And, Mr. Members of the council, I'll turn this over to Ms. Godinez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. My name is Christine Godinez. I'm Principal Assistant City Attorney. And, just briefly, there are three items before you, but we're asking you to simply introduce the ordinance, and then defer the other two items, the resolution and the motion, till the subsequent city council meeting. What this is, is an ordinance that would amend the Glendale Municipal Code to allow aggregate net energy metering. This council has already implemented a net energy metering program, which is primarily for solar customers. What it allows them to do is to have a solar facility on their property, to use that energy for their own needs, and then to feed the excess energy back to GWP's system. And then, at the end of each year, if they produced more energy than they needed from the city, they have the right to receive compensation for that. So, aggregate net energy metering, what that does is it allows customers to use the load from more than one meter, so multiple meters, either on the same property or on an adjacent property, to combine that load for purposes of making that calculation at the end of the year for net energy metering. Right now, the way our city code reads is, it's one meter, one account. So, for the limited purpose of implementing this aggregate net energy metering program, we're proposing to amend the code to allow multiple meters for one account. And I'm happy to answer any questions about this.
It's a, so we're deferring the resolution and the motion, we're merely introducing the ordinance.
Correct.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Friedman.
Second.
Not necessary.
Not necessary.
It's okay, we do it sometimes. 8D, please.
8D is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Unit Number Eight Gas Turbine Engine Repairs at the Grayson Power Plant. B1 is a motion authorizing to execute a change order with Wood Group Pratt Whitney, who's a resolution appropriating $1,001,000.
Mr. Zern.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, back in July, we had come to you with a sole-source request for a purchase order for our 8A main engine that had failed. We swapped it out, put a spare in there. We needed to send the engine back to the Pratt Whitney Company at their Connecticut facilities, so they could tear it down and inspect it. They completed that work, and they have given us a list of repairs. We negotiated a repair cost, that's the 1.1 million you see, and so we are asking to amend that contract, to add the 1.1 million to facilitate the, the repair. And, Mr. Sananian, it's the only game in town, they're the only ones who work on this, this, this particular piece of equipment, and the only folks that, even, even to the point of having to send it back to Connecticut to be torn down, it can't even be done here, they have one plant. GE's very similar, when we deal with them on their engines as well. So, at least with Pratt Whitney, they're, they're very cooperative, and they were willing to negotiate somewhat with us. I can't say the same for their counterpart, but we're happy with what they've come up with, and, and now we wanna complete the repairs.
Seems that there would be a niche for a independent mechanic to deal with some of these. It's like having to take your car to the dealer all the time, when the guy in the corner...
We, we have a really, Mr. Mayor Njarian, we have a really good maintenance staff, it's just, this is a level that exceeds that. And, and these tear downs and repairs occur over many, many hours of use. So, i- in effect, it's years before we have to do these major upgrades, and so, it, it's better that we utilize the expertise at the facility in those, what I'll call, rare occasions.
Is there a warranty on their work?
Yes, there is a, a level of warranty. I don't know on the repair. One year, one year.
One year.
One year. Parts and labor.
One million, one year.
How old is this? How old is it, the...
1977 is when we purchased it, yes. One of our newer units.
Wow.
And it's worth repairing.
Yes, in this particular case, because of the way it works in combination with, this is 8A, 8B, and, and, and get the combined cycle unit, we're gonna need this. This is gonna be a valuable piece as we go down the line. If there was another one of our units, we may, we may not wanna to put that kinda money into it, considering the IRP we're gonna be looking at in the future of, of Grayson. This one, I would recommend.
Okay. So, there is a motion and a resolution at 8D. Would someone like to make a motion for 8D1 and 2? Can we do together?
I'll move the item.
8D1 and 2 is moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council members, divine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Barpetian.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Njarian.
Yes. Thank you. The next item of business?
Is there any, actually, is there any oral communication?
There are oral communication cards. We will start oral communications.
Thank you, and this is the five-minute portion. Each discussion is limited time, is not a part of this agenda. Speaker will be allowed five minutes. Counsel may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. City manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation report.
Tamara Movsesian?
Ms. Movsesian.
Is not here. She did speak in, in her last few sentences of her remarks, she inquired about the feasibility of obtaining and interpreted, an interpreter for Armenian and Spanish speakers. And what I, what I'd like to do is just get a, an idea as to what that would cost, and if there are any legal requirements for providing interpreters. Just a report at some point, whenever you, you can do that. I have a feeling it's gonna be cost-prohibitive, but let's at least see what the costs are.
And we, we've done the report, it's been a few years, so we can basically dust that off.
Dust it off and bring it back.
Bring back new costs for that.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'd like to bring an issue to you that is very, very dangerous situation. That's the bicyclists on Chevy Chase Canyon. Three weeks ago, I almost hit two of them. I live off of Golf Club Drive, I came up to Golf Club Drive, entering Chevy Chase, I stopped, I had ready to go, and two of them just went right through the stop signs. I missed them by probably a foot and a half. This is continuing. I've spoke, spoken to Sue Shine, who's our policeman up there, I've spoken to the traffic officers, and I've spoken, spoken to the traffic department. I've recommended that they put dots or speed bumps there. No resolution. Something has to be done, somebody's gonna get killed. They do this all the way up and down the canyon, every day, all the time. Something has to be done. They talk, I know about putting a stop sign there, like a signal, they won't stop. If you go down to Chevy Chase, Verdugo, they come down Chevy Chase, and if they're, got the red, they go right through, if there's nobody coming through on either side. They will not stop. They put policemen up there, and they've stopped groups of them, but they don't carry any ID, so they can't give me any tickets. Now, if we did that, and we drove our car, we'd be in jail. They need to do something about these bicyclists. My neighbors say the same thing. I'm basically here also representing my neighbors. This is a big problem, somebody's gonna get killed, and then we're gonna get sued. But, we'll lose a life. Any questions on this issue?
Well, if you're concluded, you usually don't have a question-and-answer format.
Right, I know.
But if you have concluded your remarks, there may be, I see some interest on, on my left, who...
All right, yes.
But, no, no, sir, not a question-and-answer, so if you're, if you're completed...
I'm done, I mean, this is, this is my feelings, and something's gotta be done, somebody's gonna get killed. Yes. Okay.
Divine, do you have a question of the speaker?
No, no, I just wanted to make a comment.
Okay, thank you, sir. We do have a comment, and thank you for your remarks.
All right. I think...
I just wanted to let, let him know, and, and everyone else know, that I had a similar experience, where I stopped at a stop sign. The cyclist did not stop at his, and I proceeded, and I could've hit him very easily, and he made a smart remark back at me. And so, I'm, I'm maybe suggesting that walk-by Glendale take more action in, in educating their cyclists. You know, they get a large turnout to all of their events, cycling events. I think they should, we should talk to them about stressing safety and, and the rules of the road, that, that cyclists are exactly like cars, and they have to observe these, the traffic signals and stop signs, et cetera. So, I, I think that has to be something that, that's done.
No, no, thank you, sir. You're, so we don't go back and forth, but we did hear you loud and clear, and I think we're thinking about the issue.
I think Tom wanted to make a comment, he looked like he was wanting to make a comment.
Mayor Njarian, the only comment I would make, the walk-by Glendale is a very organized group of individuals that try to educate safety. They, they are all about safety. The particular group that I think we're talking about is a different group, they're more of the racing style, and I can assure you that Chief Castro has been working on that particular group, and they are getting citations, and I can tell you, one has gone to jail, and unfortunately, one person who did run a stop, a red light, which was on Glendale Avenue, he ran a red light at about 30 miles per hour, and he was killed. So, I can tell you that's working, so...
May, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I mean, I don't know how many times I've seen cyclists just utterly ignore signs, rules, lights, it's, it's mind-boggling. I mean, I, they're totally unprotected. They are, they are the ones that risk the most when they do that. They're unprotected, they're on a, on a, on a bicycle, others are in cars, so if there's a collision, we know who's gonna suffer the most. And they just don't stop for stop signs, they ignore red lights. I don't understand, we have to, we have to take action for their own safety.
I will pass on the speaker's comments to Chief Castro and his staff.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Pastor Charles Updike.
Good evening.
Good evening. I want here to ask the council's help. Glendale Philharmonic Orchestra, I'm a part of that board. It meets in the First Baptist Church, usually where I was the pastor. I just retired. I work with the board now, and it's our desire to expand the board. And currently, we're looking for a board president. We have a really growing presence in terms of music in the city, and now that we're the only surviving orchestra in Glendale, it's imperative that our board really step up, and we want someone in the presidency of our board who is really connected to city. And we're looking for an individual that you may know or recommend to us, that we might consider or speak with about the organization. Our company is incorporated. It's a nonprofit, 503, five years ago, and continually continues to grow. And we currently have three major projects: the Glendale Philharmonic Orchestra, the Los Angeles Cello Quartet, and Music for Children Fighting Cancer. We have earned an excellent reputation, and after five years, put on some wonderful music for the city and for the area. And we'd like to use this opportunity to welcome all former Glendale Symphony and Glendale Pops, former Renaissance Orchestra board members to join with us, really, and make this thing go. The board is expanding, but that critical leadership position, if you know of others in the city who love music and want to help us move the orchestra forward, we would love to have someone recommended either from the council or through different agencies of the arts that might come and sit on the board that can help us to develop this. And I appreciate your time, and we look forward to presenting more concerts in the area. Thank you.
Very much. Margaret Hammond. Followed by Leanna Zelli.
Good evening, members of the city council, Honorable Mayor, otherwise, and staff and people out there in the audience. I don't know whether to congratulate you, since you're going to be in for a few good cudgels, I'm sure, over the years when people don't agree with you and so forth, so be ready. Number one, there is a bicycle ordinance on the books. I talked about this before. I phoned up to Sacramento. It's covered under DMV. Bicyclists are covered under DMV. The rules are just the same as for cars. There is an ordinance on the books, definitely. I've talked about it, and I've checked it out. And, you know, the bulky items are building up again down around our area on Adams Hill, particularly on streets where there are several apartment buildings, like Boynton. There's junk mattresses, couches thrown out on the front and laying there. I don't know why nobody calls, but it's really sickening to keep... I mean, they destroy the appearance of the whole neighborhood and the reputation. And by the way, the ambulance, while it's being donated, there's somebody that has to pay for the freight for it to get there, and that person, very generously, of course, is Dr. Hartan Najarian. And he's very generous with the help of his medical knowledge and so forth in helping out the people in Armenia. And he's a very dear man, actually. Now, my main reason for being here is we have a crisis on our Adams Hill, big time. All of a sudden, I was notified on Friday that there is going to be... Which our area is R1R. That there's going to be a childcare center wanting to open up at 717 East Cypress Street. Now, our area is strictly residential, but apparently, on checking into it all, it's up to the state to control it. The only way that the city can control what's going on there is for them to find out if they have gotten the proper variances for the work that would have to be done to make them comply to the state demands. The fire department still has not finished giving them their permit. It's still laying there. And on the fire inspector's desk, I spoke to him, Nazarian his name is, and he's a very knowledgeable man, and he told me, you know, he has gone out there to do an inspection and had certain requirements, and she is not being called back. The thing that upsets us even more is that the people, the person that's going to open this child center, is the one that is responsible for $23 million fraud from Medicare, from the Adams Square Pharmacy and the Kenneth Road Pharmacy. And she is the one that's... Her house, it's her house, which she now is claiming she has turned into a duplex. Well, she can't do that. I mean, I'm within an area where I should have been notified if there was going to be any change of the zoning. And in two instances, I have two properties, the one backing up to this, and then I'm just three doors up from it. But what bothers us is, again, what I said last time, we're nothing but a big parking lot in Glendale. On our street, you cannot park at any time, very rarely. People are juggling each other to get a parking space, and if you can imagine, this facility can be up to fourteen children. Now imagine fourteen parents trying to leave their children off in the morning and pick them up at night, and there's no parking, there's no access at all. I mean, it's very difficult on our hill. So it's not fair that the state... It's not your fault. I mean, I found out all the information. It's up to the state. They are the ones that are issuing this permit for them, and they don't care. They just say, if you want to do it, do it. And how she's getting around the fact that she's up on indictment for her defrauding is having her daughter's name, but the daughter is supposedly going to be the one that's going to be taking care of the childcare center. But again, we're right back to this nonsense. I mean, they had, you know, when they came and raided the house and took her out back in whatever, October, it's no secret, you know, none at all about her, and here she is, going to open up another facility that we have questions about and which will be very detrimental to our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Is that a state law, or is it up to the state to issue?
The state precludes cities and local control on a number of fronts, including group homes. I'm not sure about childcare facilities.
They do license... They are responsible for licensing. I think the zoning still controls, so we can certainly take a look at that and follow up, just see what the status is.
Okay. 717 East Cypress.
Thank you. Next speaker, Leanna Zelli. Concluding with Richard Liebow.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I am here today to advocate on behalf of Ms. J. Tim and Ms. Hill, two hard-working women who have spent the past eight years saving their money to open their own business one day, specifically a massage parlor. In March of this year, their dream became a reality. Their permits were approved, they had plans already, and they had leased a space. Construction started. However, everything came to halt with the passage of urgency ordinance number 5853, placing a temporary moratorium on the construction of massage establishments in Glendale to review the possibility of changes to current regulations and zoning. As a result of the moratorium, Ms. J. Tim and Ms. Hill have had to stop construction. They have spent their entire life savings, almost $30,000 in total. Should the moratorium continue to apply to Ms. J. Tim and Ms. Hill, and should new regulations and zoning laws be passed regarding the layout and operation of massage establishments, these two women will no longer be able to afford additional costs. They do not have any additional money left, nor can they borrow any more money. They will effectively be bankrupt. Ms. J. Tim and Ms. Hill were scheduled to open their business on May 1st. This has been delayed, causing uncertainty of when, if ever, they will be able to open their business. They have a five-year lease, which they cannot get out of currently, and as previously mentioned, they have spent almost $30,000 in construction, planning, and city permits that were issued only in March. Ms. J. Tim and Ms. Hill appreciate the importance of reviewing regulations and for the necessity of the public and public safety. However, to allow the moratorium and the possibility of new regulations to apply to Ms. J. Tim and Ms. Hill will unjustly penalize them. Therefore, I'm here today on their behalf to ask the city council to consider lifting the moratorium as it applies to these two women and to allow them to continue as planned with opening their business. Your time and consideration is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't ask questions of you. We may ask questions of staff for clarification, but thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
So, Mr. State Attorney, in fact, we did pass the urgency ordinance. Do we know, obviously, this is one of the pipeline projects, perhaps?
This was one that I believe did... Had pulled permits, but didn't have all of the licenses to operate a massage establishment, including the massage establishment permit and the BRC. I want to take a look at this particular case. We are coming back to you on May 12th to ask for the council to extend the moratorium. At that time, the council have the opportunity to decide whether or not to grandfather this particular business or not. So we'll be back before you on May 12th, and again, on May 19th, actually adopt that ordinance.
It seems like there are some equity considerations.
Certainly. We'll certainly analyze that and bring that to you as part of the extension.
Thank you very much. Mr. Liebow. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you. I'm very pleased to be here this evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Najarian, other esteemed council members, especially Ms. Divine, who has been re-elected, and Mr. Hartanian, who is just elected. I certainly supported both of you, and I'm glad to see you on the dais this evening. And also...
There is no council member Hartanian here.
Arpetian, I'm sorry. I'm already getting your name wrong. And of course, other city staff, and I'm happy to see, Mr. Zern, that you're still here, because some of my comments will be directed to you. I'm going to reiterate, and I'll tell you a little later why I'm doing this, some of the things that I've appeared before you this past year that I think are of importance to the city of Glendale. The first thing, and very briefly, is about the traffic calming, and I know, Ms. Divine, you're certainly one who supports that. We still have the problem on Kenneth Road. I'm sorry that Mr. Golani is not here to hear my remarks, but that needs, of course, some resolution. Secondly, I will refer back to the Brockmont Park Historic District and the fact that we still do not have some further action that's needed on that. I'm sorry to see Mr. Foley leave and that Mr. Hagani is not here this evening. As some of you may recall, that issue still remains, and that is the fact that there is a loophole in the historic preservation ordinance, which allows properties to be raised if you, as the council, have not finally approved that historic district. That loophole needs to be closed in. I've tried to get that point across to the Glendale Historical Society, and that point still needs to be made. The next point I'd like to make is about Glendale Water and Power. And some of you may know that back in October 2013, I had a flood in my home that resulted in 25,000 gallons going from my master bath to my living room, causing $50,000 in property damage. The upsetting thing to me about that was, and Mr. Zern knows all this, is that I was... There was a message left on my landline that I had over-usage of water, when in fact, they had on file my email address, because I've paid my bills online for many, many years, and I was not contacted over, and this went on for six, seven days. Some of this has been corrected, and I've certainly commended Mr. Zern and his staff about that. Part of the problem is the functionality of the smart system. And I'm sorry, in fact, that he didn't mention some of that this evening. Those of you who have the app on your phones, you may know that, you know, now, and I have it on my phone, we can check the usage. It's wonderful. But the problem with the usage is that it's days behind. It'll never be in real time, but when the water is three, four, or five days behind, the electric is two days behind, that's a problem, and that's something that I think that GWP needs to work on. They also need to work on getting word out and educating the populace of Glendale about the fact that we have this problem, and using that app is one way to help the problem. Another area that I'd like to touch on is the Glendale, of course, Rose Parade float. No one shows up from the newly-established committee. I'm not really too much of a member of that committee, but I still would urge that, and I'm sure someone is going to come and ask for that Glendale Urban Art Program Fund to be used for that purpose. I know that Mr. Ochoa has disagreed with me about that, but I think the ordinance could be updated to allow for that. I was glad there was, of course, discussion about the Holocaust. I'm sorry, Mr. Sinanian, that I missed your comments, even though, you know, I have talked about that. And then, finally, I want to make mention of the fact that Mr. Sinanian, in my experience with him and over the course of the last year, as it was mentioned last night, has been a very good mayor for the city of Glendale. And one of the things that he did this past weekend that I think I am very proud for him to have done is that he attended a meeting in Pasadena, a fundraiser, in which it deals with what's called Project 10. Some of you may be familiar with it. It's been around for many years through the Los Angeles Unified School District, and he was there to support the LGBT community in promoting Project 10. I think that was absolutely outstanding on his part, and I think he's to be publicly acknowledged for that. And in conclusion, I just want to tell you that this may be one of my last appearances at council, because come the end of next month, I will be moving out of Glendale. This has been in the works for many years. I've been a resident for 36 years. And something tells me, though I'm moving to San Diego, which is a very ideal community to live in, I think I'm going to miss Glendale, and I'm going to miss some of the actions that have occurred in this room, but I wish you all the best of luck in your future decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Liebow. Mr. Liebow. We have new business? Not from closed session? Okay. We have no new business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Who would adjourn?
Second. We're adjourned.